Well, good evening and thank you for joining us tonight for our Tuesday, September 22nd, joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Development Agency. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that Lauren, if you could please do a roll call.
Councilmember Dolosso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Lammon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Skilman.
Here, thank you. All right, and we'll move on to item three, if everyone could please join me in my honorable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes for our meeting that was held on September 8th, 2020.
Move to approve?
A second, this is Councilmember Deloso.
Uh, Deloso, I'm going to introduce you now for a second. All right, so we've got motion by Councilmember Harvey in a second, I'll just pick randomly Councilmember Deloso. Lauren, could you please make a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and we'll move on to announcements. Given that meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers, in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the items and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes the citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G, and hopefully soon to be measure S, supports police services and a variety of recreation programs for all ages, the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kataticitie.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. It's our top priority to provide G-1 prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. And like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kataticitie.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. Next, we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the final agenda, and I will ask our city manager, Mr. Obit, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, no proposed changes tonight.
Okay. So now we'll move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. At this point, I will ask our city clerk, could you please check attendees and see if anybody would like to make public comments on consent calendar or citizens' business?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. For our attendees tonight, to make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial *9 if you're just using your telephone. Listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or number, and for the audible zoom notification that you've been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will be given. Lori Alderman, go ahead.
First, on the citizens' business, I'd like to address that there needs to be some disciplinary action done to whoever is... Two things. The feasibility study for Measure G, I mean Measure S, was started in March, and it was held from the judge in August about the misleading wording, and it was held out of the agenda packet in early July, and that shouldn't have happened. Somebody should be disciplined for that. And then the other thing is your latest, whoever is doing these videos and things on Measure S with only showing one side, using the misleading ballot wording, and once again, needs to be disciplined because you're once again going to end up having this thrown out in court because of how you're handling it. It's against the law to work city, to use city funds, city staff time to get a measure approved, and not to tell people that it doesn't... Measure G does not sunset until 2023, and that the main thing is you're changing over to a permit tax, is not being transparent and honest with your constituents. Okay, Lauren, I'm going on to consent calendar, and I'm just going to do quickly on the drive-in movies. They sound like a great idea, but if you look at all the things having it in... I worked it out to be if there was 100 people that were able to attend, in three times you're able to do it. It's $15 a person that you're subsidizing somebody. It's not like movies in the park where 300 people can come. These recreation monies need to be spent on things that you don't have to... You do a greater amount of the public, not on the... For the few. I mean, the same thing happened with Camp Katati, there was only 12 kids, and there's what, how many kids in Katati? So these... There just needs to be more creativity on how to do things in the drive-in and some of the practical things, like how are we going to hear here and that kind of stuff? There doesn't seem to be any budget for it. Okay, that's it.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name's Adrian Lobby, I live on Kingston Way in the Red Hill apartment complex. It's beautiful, fall night, I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak. And just note a couple of major items in the news today. $12 million to Breonna Taylor's family for her murder in her bed in her own apartment by the Louisville Police. And the Justice Department making a list of anarchist cities. Both of these things make us want to think a little bit about our charming and what we think of as an idyllic town. We don't anticipate someone getting murdered by the police. We don't anticipate being on some... Having some federal police force come into our town. But things are not as they always have been, and police violence happens. So this is a really critical topic, and we've been waiting to set up a second special meeting to talk about policing and racism in the city, and I'm hoping that tonight is going to be the night, we'll gear the date for it. I can't imagine what is holding it up, other than I just can't imagine, the urgency is right in front of us. We would like to see it publicized much better than the last one, and would hope that you as a council would discuss how that could happen, perhaps with water bills, if they're going out in a timely manner. We'd also like to see you invite presentations from the public. I know that your manager, Obit, has been doing some research on the topics that are going to planly come up in this meeting, but we really need a larger group of people to give us details, provide information, and basically help the public understand some of these items. Finally, we have been asking for an ad hoc group, and it's a little shocking that it has taken so long and we're still talking about, well, maybe after the special meeting, maybe? Because this is the working group, this is the group that digs down into these issues. Can we have oversight of the police? What will it cost? What's the best kind? What's effective? How has it been done in other cities? These cannot be just left to manager Obit to figure out for us, we all need to be involved in some of them. And certainly we need a working group of two of you, and some of us, and some of the public, who are willing to spend the time to really dig into this issue and come up with the details, see how is it going to work specifically in Katati. I want to congratulate you, those of you who did a very excellent League of Women Voters candidate forum, and I appreciate that you're working on a video upgrade. I certainly hope it's going to help us have a more inviting City Council meeting. Thank you so much.
Marjorie Crumcheers, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am Marjorie Crumcheers, I live on Mattery Circle, which is right on East Katati Avenue, and I am also a member of Core Katati Organized Against Racism, as is the previous speaker. My focus tonight is on our police department and the questions that we are developing with regard to just what our police officers are doing, when and where, what's going on. We have looked at, or some of our members have looked at Facebook. I have talked about with Chief Parish, the need for Katati also to be represented in the community voice with the police log. That has been off and on. It was on for a couple of weeks recently, and it's off again, and I understand that there was a... There has been a reworking of whatever system online needs to be reworked in order for that to happen. So I'm not understanding why that is not happening. The bottom line for us is transparency, community oversight, and we have said this before, we're still pushing it. It needs to be there. It needs to be there. And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Unmuted now, so I'm just doing an unmute now, can you hear me? Am I...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, good evening, council. I'd like to just bring up an issue of what we're seeing across in Oregon and in California with the fire season, of vulnerability to ember storms. We're seeing these fires and the pictures that are coming up, and it's horrific, it's really, it's hard doing it, it's hard seeing it. I have just been to a conference and been watching for the last couple of years, the evolution of the discussion on ember intrusion, and just how much the ventilation openings that are required to have in the building for the building breathing allows the embers to come in and then set fire to the... Ignite the structures inside the building. An APA, American Planning Association Conference last week did some studies on this, or made it visible, there have been some insurance research groups that are studying this in-depth and published their findings. So generally, the issue of the embers is that they can fly up to a mile ahead of a storm, and because it's a born-on-a-wind, a strong wind, these very strong 50 mile an hour winds, they're being pushed into... Inside the building, and the buildings are generally then sometimes igniting, and of course, if one building ignites, it can spread to a whole town, so we're seeing a bunch of these fires, and it's obviously very complicated. But I'm personally, and I'm just bringing this up because this is what I'm doing, I'm going around and I'm actually updating the vents on my older building, I have a 1950s building. I've also just had a re-roofing done on the building, and the new vents that have gone in, the ridgeline vents, I think are fairly vulnerable to embers, but I'm going in and putting one 16th inch mesh. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that the city can initiate a vulnerability study just to our housing stock, or some way of putting together details that citizens, homeowners, can be given guidance? There is guidance in the RUI lands into areas for building, but not really for inside the town, and hopefully we would never get that aspect of a storm that would blow into town, but there's a lot of eucalyptus around, and if they went up in flames and this ember storm came through. So anyway, it's just a request that in some way we look at a vulnerability study to embers of some sort. So thank you very much.
Will Proudie, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm happy to see my fellow citizens, I was raising concerns. Unfortunately, I'm there too to address an issue of transparency in the police department. I'd like to address today requests, public records requests, which have been made regarding use of force against Christopher Alcala, arrest of 2019 in Katati. We've made requests in accordance with State Bill 1421, which requires the release of all records, video, and any evidence that would be submitted to the district attorney or anybody investigating this arrest, and we've been met alternately with responses of no records exist, which would be in violation of Katati police policy. And alternately, we've been called that the records are exempt. Under State Bill 1421, Katati would be required to provide a clear legal reason why the records are exempt. Such reasons would include if the records are involved in an ongoing criminal investigation. I know there's a civil suit in place, but that is not grounds for an exemption unless there is an ongoing criminal case against the City of Katati officers, specifically Officer Garber and Corvall Deaton in this case, and I don't believe these records should be exempt. I'd like to know the reason why they have not been released. Taxpayers don't want to spend for the city to fight efforts for citizens to find transparent records to which they are legally entitled under state law. I believe Katati is in violation of state law, and I'd like to see some transparency and a stop of effort to fight the release of this information. Barring that, I'd like to hear a clear reasoning as to why this information is legally protected. Really, the requirement requires the release of all investigation in this. So that would be my request for today regarding the consent calendar and the Katati... Sorry, I yield my time, my time's up.
Mayor Skilman, that will be it for public comment.
Okay, great, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item eight, the consent calendar. And I understand, Councilmember Deloso, did you want to make a comment before we moved on the consent calendar item?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. No, I had a discussion with the city manager earlier today that just clarified a question I had, so... But with that, I would be delighted to move the approval of the...
Do you have another handout though, for Councilmember Harvey?
Oh, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
Yes, I'm hoping that in the city manager's report, I believe we're getting close to having a date, the question was asked about the next public meeting, and I believe that we will be close to that. I'm hoping that Damian will cover that in his report. And for as long as I have lived in Katati and have looked at the community voice, the police reports have been there, so I'm not sure exactly what's happening right now. It sounds like there's some changeover of systems and things, but our police reports have always been in the community voice, so it must be... Hopefully, that can be highlighted as to what's going on. I know there's some systems changes that are happening, and I'm hoping that that's what that backlog is. Hopefully, Damian will reach out to Will and answer his questions regarding their public records request. So that's my comment.
Councilmember Harvey, this is Damian. So I will say that with regard to the community voice police log, there was a changeover in systems. Originally, as I understand it, maybe Mike can add a little detail here, I understood it, the community voice's fax machine broke for a while, and then they got that sorted out, and then we... Then our logs were being printed again, and then, you know, we're part of the Public Safety Consortium. So the consortium changed out their record system, their record management system, and that caused a hiccup in the reporting. I would expect this is going to be back online here very shortly, if it's not already. And just as one of the other comments too, I will... I can certainly follow up with Rancho Adobe Fire Department and see if they have any guidance, like fire safe guidance for urban areas, that's one of the speakers that asked about And in terms of a meeting date, so we're targeting October 1st to have the next community workshop at 6:00 p.m. We're trying to finalize everything right now, but that's the date we're targeting. Just to jump forward, since that was an item of interest. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So then I'll just bring it back to council, the consent calendar.
So Mayor Skilman, this is Councilmember Deloso, and I would be happy to approve the consent calendar items A through E.
This is Councilmember Harvey, and I'm happy to second that motion.
That's okay, we have a motion in a second. I'd ask, Lauren, could you please make a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item number nine, direction on future agenda items. And I will just look at the raised hands of my fellow councilmembers, see if they have anything they wanted to put on the future agenda. Not seeing any rush to raise hands, so we'll pass on to item 10, hearings. And this is consideration of a resolution adopting a draft document titled Guidelines for Analysis of Vehicle Miles Traveled. And to present this, I believe, we've got Mr. Harries, is that correct?
That's correct, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's JP Harries, senior fire with the City of Katati. And tonight, we're going to be talking about vehicle miles traveled, as well as evaluating transportation impacts under CECL. This item is... The reason it's before the council is because one of the things that we're doing is adopting what are called thresholds of significance under CECL. And that's decided to be done by resolution ordinance through a public process. We've had two meetings with the planning permission, one was just an introduction of the topic, as well as a discussion about CECL in general. And then we recently had a meeting to discuss the actual guidelines where we're implementing these actual thresholds of significance, and they recommended City Council adoption of the thresholds and the guidelines. So if we could go to the next slide, please, Lauren. So this is born out of Senate Bill 743, as you may have heard this, it's been talked about for the last seven years now, but it significantly changes the way transportation impacts are considered under CECL. Previously, when we were looking at transportation impacts, we were looking at level of service or basically congestion. And the law now says that we can no longer use LOS as a measure of significance, or basically can't use LOS to evaluate impact on the environment under CECL. We will still use it, I'll talk about that a little more, and we will still use it for looking at our consistency with our general plan, because it is a part of our general plan, but it won't be included in CECL analysis. The idea behind Senate Bill is to focus transportation impacts on a regional level as opposed to intersection, very small level. And largely, the Senate will put the government... And largely, the Senate Bill put the government's Office of Planning and Research in charge of drafting, coming up with the new metrics to use and drafting what, how that should look. And they did that, they determined that VMT, which is short for vehicle miles traveled, would be the most appropriate metric for transportation impact. Now, as of July 1st, this is the metric that we are going to be seeing in any environmental document that comes forward in a council floor consideration. Next slide, please. I'll try to move through these quickly because the water's not going to dry. So what is level of service? Level of service, just so that you're aware of how we have been measuring things is, it's a measure of delay or congestion. Essentially, as you take an intersection, as more traffic tries to move through that intersection without any influence to that intersection, generally, the speed from which you can move through that intersection goes down, and as it goes down, we kind of score the intersection, A, B, C, D, and F, and that's based on, you know, how much delay is occurring. A is like smooth operating conditions, F would be failing, where you might be sitting through two, two or maybe even three light cycles before you can get to live through an intersection. That's all it does, though, is it just measures congestion. It does not measure what you're doing at that intersection, like how vibrant is the area around that intersection, or the downtown area. It doesn't talk about the people across the intersection, it doesn't talk about bikes. So it's just simply a measure of congestion. Next slide, please. So the reason Senate Bill came up is that, you know, historically, there was a good association between level of service and especially air quality. You know, as cars sat idle, they tend to generate air quality impacts. So typically, in the past, you can make that association. As cars have gotten there over the decades, that association has gone away, and actually, LOS is starting in terms of environmental impact. Using LOS is actually causing more problems than it's helping. And these pictures we can provide via OPR are an example of that. The picture you see on the left is a level of service, say roadway, but you'll notice that there's, you know, only a few places to go to in that whole stretch of road, and you could drive through it real quick, but it's not, this is, I consider, a really good thing. And on the right-hand side, this level of service F is often what communities are trying to do in the downtown areas, create a vibrant area, but it fails because of the ability to do traffic through that downtown area. Additionally, when you're trying to put a lot of developments into the core of your cities, as we're trying to do here in Cattotti, or we're trying to focus our development into the downtown areas and not sprawl out, what often happens is, once you've reached this level of service F or you're at E, the last person in with a project suddenly gets hit with all, with having to mitigate all the impacts of everyone else around them, that's the thing that goes into killing them. So that would mean adding a new light, or maybe even increasing the capacity of the roadway, or something like that. So it tends to punish the last person in and reward kind of planning that did not necessarily like. Okay, next slide, please. Now, additionally, there's other problems with LOS, is it tends to worsen overall congestion. This is what it means when you, it's a problem at one intersection, but you bring, you just root the problem down to the next intersection down the road, and that's called brazen curdocks. But that's a problem with LOS. And also, discourages in fill and promotes sprawl, like we talked about, it tends to increase travel lengths because people build more roadways to get quicker. It discourages mode shift, and mode shift is what we call getting people out of the cars and onto either walking or biking or using transit. It makes transit less attractive as well as other transportation alternatives, because you can get everywhere easier with cars, that's just from this. And it has poor outcomes for the environment, both the land coverage and habitat fragmentation. And it tends to be good self, because as you travel at higher speeds, the rate of injuries and accidents is up pretty consistently, as well, people tend to be less active. But these are some of the environmental reasons which are found with LOS. Move on. Next slide. So VMT, VMT goes, again, vehicle miles traveled, and it's really a measure amount of the vehicular travel across the entire transportation system. So it looks at the whole system rather than particular intersections. And we usually talk about VMT in terms of like per person, so we'll talk about residential per capita, or we'll talk about, when we're looking at employee, we'll talk about VMT per employee. And we talk about it on the recently level. And it's a measure of travel, not a measure of congestion. VMT, essentially what it is, is you take the number of trips generated by a project. For example, you build a single-family home, that's generally considered to generate 10 trips, and one movement across the threshold of the driveway is considered a trip. So you go to the store, and then you come back from the store, that's two trips. And a typical household generates 10 trips per single-family building. Not the whole family, a little less, but, and these are pretty much standardized trip tables exist, that look at a whole variety of various uses and assign trip levels to this. But then you take the number of trips by a project and you multiply it by the trip length, and this is where, and then you get VMT from that. But you cannot directly measure or observe VMT. It's done using traffic models, and one we use here is the Sonoma County traffic model, and that's maintained by the Sonoma County Transportation Board. So you, when you're looking at a project, you basically, you look at how many trips it's going to generate, and then you use that model to come up with what is, how much VMT is being generated. Next slide, please. So why change the VMT? Well, one, it's the best umbrella metric for transportation impacts, and it's big white holes as well as city holes. That's to promote infill development, promote public health, and that's the transportation. And probably, most importantly, is the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. As people drive less, the VMT goes down, and the amount of greenhouse gas emissions goes down, and it's very closely linked. VMT is already being used in CECL, we use VMT for greenhouse gas emissions when we look at what's the impact of greenhouse gas, we do look at VMT, as well as used in noise and other air quality assessments. So it's something that we're already using, and we haven't been using it to measure transportation It tends to decrease travel lengths and times, it encourages mode shifts, better for the environment, and people's health. Next slide, please. And this slide actually shows, this comes from OPR, and it shows why OPR ultimately chose to go the path they did with VMT and the thresholds that they've recommended that cities like us use. And it's because those green dots on the right kind of show where we need to get the CO2 per capita, and this is really looking at transportation impacts. There's other ways to address greenhouse gas emissions, but transportation is definitely one of the big ones. And as you can see, where the VMT is going up and our CO2 per capita is going up, it's kind of, they're very closely linked. And what we need to do is drive those numbers down beneath these dots, which are the goals that the state has established for greenhouse gas reductions, and we also map view of these points. You can start to see that there's a separation between the two lines, the CO2 per capita and VMT per capita, and that's what we're getting as, as cars that become more efficient or people switch to electrical, there's just, there is a separation, it's, you know, it's getting better, but we're not getting close to where we need to be in terms of meeting our greenhouse gas emissions. So that's part of the motivation for this VMT. The next slide, please. And next slide. I don't want to labor this too much, but these are all the environmental areas we'll look at when we're doing CECL, and you'll see this one is the one that falls under the transportation category of the area. That's what we're focused on in tonight's session. Next slide, please. The adoption of thresholds, the process for doing that and which we have followed is set forth in the CECL guidelines, section 15064.97, actually, I should say ABD, I don't, but essentially, what is a threshold? It is a level of particular environmental effect. So generally, if you're below that level, you're normally considered to have less than a significant impact. If you have greater than that level, then you're typically considered to have a significant impact on the environment. And when you're evaluating a project or a plan, if there's a significant impact, you would have to go out and identify mitigation measures to reduce that impact unless it's significant. Or else you would prepare an environmental impact report, and analyze it through that process, and then, either identify mitigation, or in order to approve a project that does have a significant impact, adopt a statement of overriding consideration. So the adoption of thresholds, it does have to be done through a public process, and it has to be supported by substantial evidence, and you can rely, which is what we've done here, we can rely on other public agencies or basically advice recommended by experts and supported by substantial evidence. The next slide. So what we've done is we, previously, the standards for transportation were the LOS standards, and they exist within our general plan, and so if you go into the general plan, you can see what the standards are. So we don't have any published VMT thresholds. So what we've done is we created a, basically, a guidebook for analysis of VMT, and within that guidebook, it discloses what the thresholds of significance we're willing to be using when we evaluate transportation reports that come associated with a project when they come into the city. So the guidelines that we prepare, they address several things. One, the metrics, how VMT should be presented, screening which projects we'll be able to screen out, and I'll talk a little bit about screening, but there are certain projects that just because of the nature of the project, either small, or located in a certain area or they're of a certain type, they just aren't going to be generating significant VMT in general, most likely. Also, it talks about what methods you should use to calculate and forecast VMT, and then, like I hold this here, it does disclose what those levels of significance are, and then it also recommends different mitigation that a project sponsor could use. Next slide. So our recommended thresholds of significance, they are based on OPR's recommendation, they come out of the Technical Advisory on Evaluating Transportation Impacts at CECL, that was published in December of 2018, and it is in your packet. We've been through multiple OPR webinars and trainings, and basically, what we did is we based our thresholds on their recommendations, which seem to align with our goals for reducing greenhouse gas, promoting active transport, active walking and biking. And they did all the research, they've got all, we've got it all documented, as well with the feasibility of implementing, and those appear to be there, and there's evidence for that. But those are, that was the basis for our recommendation, because it comes directly from OPR. Next slide, please. So quickly go through this, I know it might be confusing, but essentially, when we're looking at residential projects, or a new, a new single-family subdivision, or a new multi-family project, they would have, they would have to come out 15% below the citywide average for residential VMT per capita. For office and industrial projects, they would have to be 15% below the countywide average employment VMT for working. Retail projects, retail projects don't tend to generate new trips. What they do is they move trips from one retail place to another retail place. So it would be significant if it results in an increase, it doesn't have to decrease VMT, but it can be. Redevelopment projects, kind of the same thing, if there's an increase in VMT, you can build a, up a pair previously, that would be a significant impact. And then other development projects, and a lot of our transportation projects, most of these will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And so some of these may not apply, these are early thresholds, in which case, I guess we'll have to get that determination on a case-by-case basis. And we'll probably be looking to these other projects as kind of guidelines for how we would evaluate, say, a hotel. It's not real clear, I do talk about it in the guidebook, how we would approach a hotel, but it's something that we would do on a case-by-case basis. Okay, next slide, please. So this slide is a, it shows VMT all around the county. And so if we're, so what I'm trying to show here is, here's our residential VMT per capita at the top, 19.42. If you were building a project and it wasn't in an area that was screened out, you would have to generate, or you would have to get that project so that it only produces 16.51 VMT per capita. And I know this is technical, it's very difficult to understand, but just understand that there's models that help tell you what these numbers are, and these are numbers that you can generate, and not much magic behind that, but it's a lot of work. Then with, like, an employment, you would have to get down to 10.9, because we're there, we're using a countywide average, because employment tends to move between jurisdictions, whereas residential, let's say, kind of state level. Okay, next slide, please. And then certain projects, as I mentioned, will be screened out, you won't be seen, VMT analysis, these would be small projects, any project within half a mile or the major transit stops, or anything within half a mile or smart, 104% affordable housing projects. For those that are not 100% affordable, some VMT plan would be given to them. And again, those recommendations, the screening, come from OPR. Local serving public facilities, or the libraries and parks, light lanes clearly wouldn't be generating VMT, bus servicing, either increases, or any routes would not be considered VMT or used. Reductions in road length capacity would also be screened out. And then we're going to also use map-based screening, these are areas that we've identified to be O VMT areas, and if you have a project in that, you use O VMT areas, you may not have to. have to do analysis. Again, any project, every project is unique, so some even if they fall within this screening criteria, if there's something unusual about the project, based on our professional judgment, we may still require a re-deep analysis. Next slide please. So this is, this is a map based on current data, and the maps are going to change over time as VMT changes, as the models are updated. But the green area shows you where a residential project would be screened out. The gray areas are areas where, if they're less than small or screened out as a way, we would be asking for an end-up VMT analysis. And next slide. And this also is another screening map of the offices and industrial uses, and it also includes the smart station on this particular map. So this is, this is a map that shows whether we screened out the offices. And again, this is, these type of maps are going to change over time, but this is more careful of what we do. These were generated by SEPA for us, thanks to them, or this is for us to respond to. Next slide please. So staff is recommending adoption of the resolution, page 265, and that resolution asks you to adopt the guidelines for analysis, which is basically a eleven-page paper that contains or publishes the thresholds of significance for VMT. And with that, I will move on. Any questions, if some may have, if you may ask? Let me answer this.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. So I'll first bring it back to council, see if there are any questions. So it looks like Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, JP, what happens with existing CEQA documents that have already been filed on projects since this took effect in July of 2020? Are, do they have to be revised, or is it, do they go forward?
So any document that has not been circulated out to the street, you know, that's been approved by the city council or the planning commission, those documents are still valid. This is, this is in all documents going forward to now. No, we don't have to go back and question how any project or any document, Kelly, from previous to July 1st was a priority.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it just seems like anec- anecdotally, you know, we have generally issues with housing, and as people are looking for housing, they seem to have to go further and further out. I mean, I can recall not too long ago having to make a trip out of the county towards Sacramento, and just so many people are having to commute, basically, to find housing. So this focus on vehicle miles traveled seems to try and get people that are working more closely to where they live, if I understand it correctly.
You do, you do. It does promote improved development, promotes less sprawl, is what it actually does. It discourages just building out farther and farther and farther. Those are, you know, when you're building out the perimeter, those are high VMT areas.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And I'll pause and see if anybody else in council has questions for staff. Okay, not seeing any, and I will open it up to public comments, and I'll ask Lauren, if you could please check with the attendees, see if they'd comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. At this time, I see no raised hands for public comment.
Okay, thank you for checking. So then I will bring it back to council, see if there's any further comments or if there's a motion.
Well, I guess I will recommend that we adopt a resolution adopting the draft document as may be amended by the city council titled Guidelines for Analysis of Vehicle Miles Travel and the Thresholds of Significance published therein to be used in evaluating transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
This is Vice Mayor Moore, I would second that.
Yes.
Would you like me to go with the roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember DeLasso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lambin?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes, thank you. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, JP, for the information and the presentation and the motion passes. Now we'll move on to item 11, which is COVID-19 Temporary Economic Development Response, Phase Two. For that, we're turning it over to Mr. House.
Good evening, Mayor Gorman, members of the council. Yes, thank you. The item before you this evening is the COVID-19 Economic Development Response, Phase Two. See if I can get the PowerPoint going here. There we go. So just to summarize, this project proposes a continuation of the past council authorization, which you will recall allowed the temporary use of right-of-way, some flexible use of parking spaces for business operations. It expands and supports tenting of these downtown parking spaces and other areas, I'll get into more detail on later. It also proposes to toll or pause the expiration of all planning entitlements and permits retroactive to the declaration for the COVID-19 emergency. It proposes to permit a food truck rodeo concept likely to not be in the downtown, and then it requests an increase of the general fund commitment to support these actions from the previous $20,000 to up to $90,000. And I'm going to get into more details on this as we get through the presentation. So just as a summary, you'll recall the past council action, really, as staff, you know, in May 26th, when we presented this item, there was a lot of uncertainty about what was going to be needed to support the local business community, and staff requested that the council supported broad authorization to, in an effort to kind of create a toolbox of options to support the local businesses. And the goal of asking for a lot of flexibility from the council upfront was to provide a quick response and implementation should somebody approaches with an idea that they had that would allow them to help their business stay afloat. The council will recall, at that time, you know, staff was really struggling to plug in with individual businesses. There was a little, a lot of uncertainty about the timing of when things were going to be reopening, and really, just general lack of clarity about kind of the direction things were headed. And the council will also remember that this authorization that was granted on May 26th included use of sidewalks, planters, and park areas for business operations. These, some of these operations would include retail use, restaurants, signage, food preparation events, you know, a lot of, a lot of, essentially, a broad range of activities. The council also approved parking reduction citywide to allow the use of private property spaces for these outdoor business operations. Sorry, there's a typo here, but that's supposed to say street closure as a, proposed as an option for future consideration, and the council did authorize staff to close Old Redwood Highway, should that be supported by the business community. And then we requested $20,000 in funding to kind of aid in these efforts. And it's worth noting that none of that $20,000 has been spent as of today, but I'll get into a little bit more details. So the updated street closure concept that's now being requested would still request to authorize use of the outdoor parking areas and expand this use to include tenting. The council previously authorized tenting, but in doing some research on the cost of renting tents, potentially buying tents, it was quickly determined that $20,000 would not provide a significant number of tents for a long period of time. And so this would, the tenting is also inclusive of barricades, regular cleaning, maintenance, and kind of ongoing checking of those tents to make sure that they're up in a sound and safe manner. The new request, rather than Old Redwood Highway, requests council give staff authorization to move forward with street closures of La Plaza between West Sierra and Old Red, and then Old Red and East Cattati. In our conversations with the local business community, closure of Old Redwood Highway was seen as kind of a highly disruptive event, not sustainable in the long term, and it also would provide significant parking impacts to the public parking spaces that serve those downtown businesses. So we've kind of chatted with business folks and are bringing back kind of an updated resolution to the council to more drill down on some specific locations other than Old Redwood Highway. And then finally, there are some proposals or requests to install tents or covered areas adjacent to businesses that also preserve the public parking areas. So just, this graphic is intended to kind of show a summary of some of the closures and use of outdoor areas where we might expect businesses to be requesting to install tents or otherwise utilize these areas for business activities moving through the winter. And I would like to point out that we have an application from Bow and Arrow Clothing to utilize the section of La Plaza between Old Redwood Highway and East Cattati for an outdoor vending event this Saturday. And so that application came in. I'd really just like to highlight the work of our public work staff, our police department, the fire department, all coming together to very quickly respond to that request in a short amount of time. And we do anticipate being able to grant that authorization to the owner of Bow and Arrow Clothing and be able to have a little bit of outdoor retail activity in the downtown this Saturday. Moving on, this is just some example photos of some of the, what the other communities or other communities are doing, these are not specific to Sonoma County, but are just kind of general concepts as to how some of these tenting activities may occur in an effort to try to winterize some of the downtown area for outdoor dining and retail use moving forward. Another element of the resolution for the council proposes to toll or pause permit expirations. And in this, as written, it would pause the expiration of all entitlements of permits expiring or approved during the COVID-19 emergency declaration. And it's looking backwards to, it's retroactive to the declaration, which originally occurred in March. Before the council, there's two kind of ways this could be done. One would be to toll the expiration of any of these entitlements or permits for a period of six months after the emergency declaration is rescinded. And so that is kind of an undefined period of time, looking into the future, but it also gives some certainty to folks who are either pursuing new permits or who have permits to know that while we're still under this emergency declaration, there are no risk of expiration again. They would have six months after that emergency declaration is rescinded to move forward with their permit, should it expire during that time. That's how the resolution's currently written. However, if the council's concerned with that kind of unspecified flexibility, another option would be to toll these expirations for a set period of time, such as a year from now, essentially, a little bit more than a year from now, and staff pick the date of October 31st, 2021. Either one is anticipated to provide a lot more certainty for folks to be able to understand that they don't have to worry about an expiration. And it's really getting to the point that all of our businesses are really, and approved development, are really struggling with being able to get financing for things. And so as folks, if we can provide some certainty that their permit is not going to expire for a period of time, then that allows them to not have to spend additional resources maintaining that permit or trying to cobble together some financing in a very, very challenging financing market. Obviously, there's concerns to address. The council and the community will remember this slide, this is kind of identifying all the things that we plan to have to address in order to implement these things. Of course, first and foremost, all the health order requirements have to be preserved and met in the implementation of any of these efforts. Obviously, there's a lot of staff resource commitments and soft costs associated with those things, and hard costs with the use of the right-of-way and ongoing maintenance of any tenting, et cetera. There's a lot, a lot here, traffic diversion timelines, as we've kind of talked about. We've previously presented how we would respond to those, and then the updated request is to dedicate funding up to $90,000. You know, we looked at kind of a wish list tent rental, just to give you kind of a picture of where things stand and how we arrived at this number. You know, we walked with Encore Rentals, the downtown, identifying all the potential places where we may want to have a tent, and they came back with a bid of $50,000 per month tent rental costs and a minimum of a three-month commitment. So after getting that, we kind of stepped back, retooled, sharpened the pencil a little bit, talked to some other businesses, tried to decide really where these were necessary, and then started looking into the option to purchase tents. And there's a lot more detail in the staff report, but we've identified that we could spend about $50,000 purchasing a significant number of tents and road barricades, et cetera. The city would then own those into the future, be able to provide them as rentals if somebody chose to rent a park in the future, we would have additional barricades for road closures, et cetera. So we've kind of pivoted over to definitely a less expensive option, so a toned-down version of the wish list, so to speak, but then also looking for a more long-term and sustainable solution that we might be able to recoup some of our money by having those as resources to rent out in the future. Obviously, Public Works, the Cattati Police Department, and Fire Department, and then business input is going to be needed before any of these things are specifically implemented. But again, we're asking for broad flexibility now, so that way we can pivot quickly and allow these businesses to really implement their ideas and to meet their needs in this ever-changing kind of reality that we're in. The proposed activities are the same under the request, except, again, there is a concept for a food truck rodeo, which would be a group of food trucks located somewhere outside of downtown that may be able to kind of provide another option for residents to come to, to go out to eat, and also just generate some activity in town and interest in town. So that's why that option is there. And obviously, we do have a few restaurants here in Cattati that do have food trucks, and we would prioritize them should the council choose to approve them. And then again, the council, the duration of any of these approvals can be either for six months after the COVID-19 emergency declaration is rescinded, or October 2021. And all of them are currently written to address the six months after the COVID-19 declaration expires. We've had some meetings with some of our business owners, staff held a meeting last week, the Chamber of Commerce was very helpful in kind of getting some of our business owners to participate, as were all the staff, and we were able to kind of get a meeting together to request input on these items. of get a meeting together, um, to request input on these items. Um, and then followed up with individuals who had more questions, uh, even as of today. We were speaking with folks. Uh, there was complete support for tolling of permits. Uh, there's a written comment from one of our project applicants attached to this report. Uh, there's general support for for the tenting of downtown areas, but, um, some folks would rather utilize the sidewalk and preserve their parking while others, uh, thought the parking was a good idea. So there's we're requesting flexibility in that. Um, the idea to utilize La Plaza for a downtown outdoor bazaar, our kind of shopping experience was very supportive as well. Um, with the idea that just it would in general drive more interest and action into downtown. Uh, the restaurant since it has been as beneficial, but overall it was supported because it would just create some more interest in in coming to our community and then provide some safe ways to for folks to be able to do so, similar to the farmer's market. Uh, and then with the food truck rodeo, there was kind of mixed input. Uh, some of the businesses were very supportive and excited, um, but others, uh, were concerned over impacts to their existing business, and and that was primarily from the restaurants. Uh, so, uh, that that was kind of mixed, but I wanted to, uh, identify that to the uh, the council. Uh, and there's a couple of items in the staff report that, uh, are not, uh, summarized in the slides, but it's worth noting, um, in staff's discussions with the Economic Development Board, we've identified that, uh, the childcare providers in the county are have been hit especially hard by the impacts of COVID nineteen. Uh, and the county is estimating that up to thirty percent of these businesses or or even three hundred individual providers in the Sonoma County have closed, um, just since , uh, the pandemic has begun. Uh, obviously, it's the reduced demand, uh, limits on their operations, they have to limit their class or cohort sizes, and then the increased costs are all seen as as likely contributors to this. And so, um, all the Sonoma County jurisdictions are trying to figure out ways to support this industry through added flexibility in where and how childcare operations are allowed. Uh, and the attached resolution would allow childcare businesses to utilize additional onsite square footage, both indoor and outdoor for these activities to meet the new operational requirements. Obviously, they have to, um, follow the guidelines of the state and county regulations, but the resolution that's before the council does authorize this. Uh, and it's really intended to allow them to kind of separate their childcare groups into cohorts, which is mandated under the the COVID nineteen health requirements, but potentially split their space, uh, to keep their cohort separate, but continue to provide, uh, childcare services. Um, so just, so, uh, we wanted to highlight that. And then finally, there is also some some input, uh, from the county in an interest, uh, to expand home based businesses as we kind of start to pivot away from this, or even folks who maybe had to close their close their brick and mortar store are interested in expanding, uh, or allowing operations in from their home or other residential properties. Um, as of right now, there's nothing in the resolution that would allow that, but staff felt it was it was important to highlight that that is kind of a conversation that's occurring, uh, in the county and and among various jurisdictions. And then there's a summary of some of the, uh, the new state color coded system, which has come out since our, uh, May presentation to the council, uh, and that's included in the staff report, and it just kind of identifies what, uh, type of activities can occur under the various, uh, color tiers that the state, uh, created with their new color coded system. Uh, so I know there's a lot of information on the staff report. I was trying to be brief in my presentation, but I wanted to, uh, identify that it's recommended by the Community Development Department that the City Council adopted a resolution approving, uh, the COVID nineteen economic development response phase two, including allocating ninety thousand dollars in general fund, uh, monies to support this effort, uh, allowing potential street closures of La Plaza as identified tolling of permit entitlement expirations, uh, and continuing the past authorization for flexibility in the use of public right of way, park lands in temporary and continuing the temporary parking reductions citywide. Um, I am available for any questions, uh, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Noah, for the presentation. Um, we'll bring it first to council, see if there's any questions for staff. It looks like Councilmember Lemon, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Mr. House, thank you for the presentation. I have to admit, I'm confused. I just got an email from the Sonoma County Taxpayers Association this morning saying that all the cities in this county, including us, haven't invested in small businesses and haven't decreased regu- regulations, and somehow that just really doesn't jive with what you've been doing this year and what you're presenting tonight. So I don't know if you can answer that question for me, or it's certainly a question. What I do specifically want to ask you about, in your discussion, you mentioned, uh, considering the closing of La Plaza, and you had mentioned reaching out to some businesses along there. I want to confirm that we have talked to all the businesses along there, including the ones that aren't necessarily, uh, restaurant and food service. Uh, I'm thinking of, for example, a framing shop. Uh, I want to make sure that in providing places for other businesses to expand, we don't certainly impact any existing businesses. So I want to ask you to speak to that and also local childcare providers. Have we reached out to any of our daycare schools, our schools in town, just to check and and see if their needs are met by, uh, the things we're looking at?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Lemon. So, uh, I regarding the Sonoma County Taxpayers, uh, comment, um, they've never contacted me or anyone on our staff that I'm aware of to inquire about what we've been doing. Um, so I'm not sure whether they're getting that, uh, information or or, um, that what could be characterized as an assumption, or at least maybe a a, um, a position that could could, uh, benefit from some additional input from staff. So I would just encourage them to contact me directly or the city manager, or if you would like to forward me the inquiry you saw, I'm happy to provide some additional information. Um, obviously, the last council action on May twenty sixth was public, um, so I'm not sure what research they did to to kind of come to that conclusion, but I'm happy to to drill down into it. Um, we have not been able to make contact with all of the businesses in the downtown. Uh, so we held last Thursday, we held a meeting, um, with the goal to try to engage with all of the businesses downtown. I personally started, uh, at the Frog Song Mixed Use Development and handed out flyers, uh, which had a specific Zoom meeting, uh, link and time, uh, to every business along that, uh, along Old Redwood Highway on both sides. Uh, and if no one was there, I taped the flyer to their door. Um, we, I would say, had a relatively lackluster turnout. Uh, the frame shop was one of the businesses that I personally visited. They have a sign on their door saying that they are closed until further notice, and I did not return there today to see if the flyer that I left on their door had been, uh, retrieved or not. So I can't speak to all of that. Um, we are doing notifications to folks, uh, or we will be if we, uh, close, uh, La Plaza to let them know and to allow them the the opportunity to provide their input. Uh, but I handed out specifically forty flyers that day, uh, including to the childcare business, uh, businesses in the area. I did not hear back from them either. I do know the city manager, Obid, has had a chance to chat with, uh, at least one of the providers. Um, and I don't I don't know if he would like to add anything to that, but I hope that answers your questions.
I I I think it does give me a lot to work with, Noah. First of all, I'm more than satisfied with the effort, and not hearing back is not necessarily bad news. My experience in this is usually if there's a problem, you hear about that more quickly. So I appreciate the effort, and I also recognize the difficulty of trying to reach consensus with something as complex as this and working with a lot of businesses who have different interests and different needs. So I appreciate, uh, the efforts, and I would just encourage you probably to continue those efforts and follow it, uh, kind of in the medical context of first do no harm and then see where we can find consensus, do what we can to help. So I do have some comments, but they're not really questions, so I'll save those for later. Thank you for answering that for me.
Okay, and, uh, Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, so I I'm trying to grapple with, uh, the set date of October twenty twen- twenty twenty one, God, hard to believe, or, um, six months after, uh, the COVID nineteen emergency declaration. So he- help me again. So we made the declaration in March, and how does that work? Do we have to have another declaration that un, uh, doesn't undo of our emergency?
Uh, that that's actually a good question, Councilmember Harvey. I am operating to the assumption that that is what it takes, but I might ask our city attorney to chime in on the mechanism to rescind an emergency declaration.
It's not like we do this very often, so fortunately.
Thank goodness.
I, uh, I'm lacking in what we need to do exactly.
Uh, Damian's, uh, done a lot more studying of the ordinance than I have, but I believe the council has to, from time to time, extend the emergency declaration so it expires by operation of law. Is that correct, Damian?
Well, the current extension is based on the governor's, um, executive orders, and then, um, the expectation, at least my current expectation, is that we would be coming back to council to rescind it at some point. It's appropriate.
Okay, so we would take a formal action, so that would give people a date certain because we'd have to take a formal action that would rescind it, and then they would, if we went in that direction, it would be six months after that. Otherwise, it would be the suggested October twenty twenty one, and if we had to adjust that because of circumstances, we could also do that, correct?
That is correct, and and I would just say the October twenty one, uh, timeline was just, and I won't say arbitrary, but it it was trying to give some certainty, but also some limitation, um, for the council to consider.
Well, yeah, because as you pointed out, you know, we have, you know, a lot of, um, places that are trying to get financing for things, and if you know that you, you know, you have a date in the future that you can depend on, it's a lot more helpful than, you know, not knowing, you know, when someone's gonna say, oh, your entitlements are expired. So I think that 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 helps those, um, those folks. Um, I really appreciate the presentation, and I think, you know, one of the things that we need to do, which is what I think you're trying to do, is be, um, communicate as much as you can with the businesses that are willing to communicate back with you and to allow as many options that we can in order to be able to be, as you put it, nimble, um, so that we can, um, help folks. So thank you for the presentation and thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, and I see Councilmember Delosso, I think, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Noah, thank you for the presentation, and I'll have some more comments if after the public comment section's open, but, um, this is a question regarding the rodeo concept, which, uh, certainly in the 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 beginning, it sounds like it's a really, potentially a really good idea. Um, you know, we all know that that saying that business does bring more business. However, I assume there was some resistance because we have, to my knowledge, two food trucks of existing food businesses in Catati, at least two. I don't know if we have more, but, um, obviously, that's not, uh, a manageable number to attract people, so we would need to bring food trucks in from other locations nearby. So I'm assuming that competition is kind of what may have irked some people. Is that true? Did you hear that detail?
Yeah, that that's the concern is just, you know, most of our restaurants are operating at about forty percent of normal revenues, and so, you know, they're saying, you know, please don't, please don't bring something that would provide competition to us. Uh, and and that, like I said, it wasn't a universal concern, but it was absolutely a concern. And so, uh, one of the compromises that we've discussed is that we would not allow that in the in the core downtown, but may try to, uh, create some interest if the smart station was just one idea where there's a parking area and people could get to it and some close by residents.
Yeah, and is there a an idea, looking at the possibility of doing, um, kind of what we do with our large events in La Plaza Park, where, uh, food vendors, those in town even, can come and, uh, set up a booth, for lack of a better word, and, uh, you know, actually prepare food at those locations? I know that's a ridiculous headache because here they have a restaurant, just come over here and get the food from us. So, um, yeah, I just don't know if that's even an option for them if they brought that up.
Oh, we would definitely allow it if we just if the council chose to support this rodeo option, but you are right, it is, uh, somewhat of a a headache, and there are health department requirements that that would have to be met in order for them to do so, similar to what you see at the at a downtown market type event where there's those types of venues.
Right, right, all right. Thank you for that. I will, um, refrain from some other comments until after public comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, um, actually, let me jump in for a second and just make sure I understood the question. So, um, Councilmember Delosso, were you, um, were you asking if, like, um, one of our businesses with a food truck could, or another restaurant that's outside the downtown area, set up a tent in downtown and sell food from the tent? Was that the question?
I I'm hinting along those lines, yes. I'm thinking, could an existing restaurant, let's stick with food for now, um, set up in this rodeo location, uh, but set up a tent where they could prepare food and serve food, uh, to people? A- and I don't know why we wouldn't. I I know we can allow that because that goes on with different events, like I say, in La Plaza Park, but it might be just such a headache from a personnel standpoint for a restaurant, because I can hear them say, and rightly so, hey, my kitchen's right here, I've got servers in here, we can get the food to you if you come over here and order it. How can, why should I bring all of that into another location and cook remotely? So I I don't think that's a great option for a restaurant. So, but yes, that's what I was asking.
I I think, I mean, I think the food rodeo location being remote from downtown would be, you know, like, just, and this isn't, you know, this is just as an example, right, potentially out at the smart station, right? They could have a, I think the concept there was you'd have maybe a like a one day a week type food ro- food truck rodeo, and I guess, you know, if they want to set up a tent and just do a tent instead of a truck, they'd probably fine as long as they meet the health off, you know, the, uh, health department requirements for that. Um, another sort of wrinkle in all this is if you, um, at least with the current state health order, um, you know, uh, bars with, uh, with kitchens are able to behave like restaurants in terms of, you know, they serve food, right? They can open at a higher level of the color coding, um, but straight bars can't open until it's, you know, fair, you know, a couple notches down unless they provide food service. So there might be sort of a wrinkle in a wrinkle where someone brings out like an outdoor barbecue and serves their bar, but then they try to serve food or food truck maybe exclusively serves food to patrons of that bar, um, you know, downtown. So that's sort of another wrinkle, but generally speaking, the, um, and I think just what Noah was saying, that's, I've heard the same thing where bars, I'm sorry, the restaurants downtown, I mean, their main concern is they don't want like a food truck to sit out in front of their restaurant serving food, um, to the general public.
Sure, I can see that. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Um, Noah, would you kindly go back on your slides to the diagram showing the two La Plaza sections that are potentially blocked off? Is that possible?
Uh, it is. I would ask, uh, the city clerk to put the presentation back up.
Noah, if you could let me know which slide to go to.
Yeah, I think it's the, um, I want to say it's the third slide.
Pretty early in the presentation.
Yeah. One more. If you advance it a few clicks, it will highlight the areas. So two more, yeah, one more after this. So two more, yeah, one more after this. There you go, thank you.
So, in looking at the potential of La Plaza off of West Sierra and going into Old Red, um, we don't have anybody that has requested a permit for that area yet, do we?
Uh, so, um, Mercedes from, uh, Bowen Arrow Clothing, she's the owner of Bowen Arrow Clothing, uh, Mercedes Hernandez, she did request to utilize that, uh, portion of the, of, um, La Plaza adjacent to her business, so the one on the right side of the screen, for this Saturday.
Okay. So that I don't have a concern with. Because if you are going north on Old Redwood Highway, you can bypass La Plaza there, take a right onto East Catati Avenue. If you are going west on East Catati, where emerges into West Sierra, uh, the traffic pattern doesn't allow you to turn left on Old Red, you have to turn on La Plaza. So in order to allow for the closure of La Plaza between West Sierra and Old Red, um, would that create some sort of a traffic concern?
Uh, that's an excellent question. It is because it would, uh, force folks to have to go down one more block to be able to make that left-hand turn. Um, from the staff perspective, we were thinking that it, it would not be, uh, would be such a regular occurrence, and it would likely be on a weekend, that it wouldn't create significant, uh, traffic changes. Or if, if there was a proposal to maybe utilize this for a, uh, you know, a month-long holiday shopping activity or something, then, uh, we would make significant efforts to, and proactive efforts to, uh, advertise the closure and, and, and the alternative turning locations. But that's definitely a valid point, something the council should consider. And we would get input from the Public Works Department and Police Department about, uh, alternative traffic circulation.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, yeah, I think on the other side, I, I don't have a concern with that at the moment. And I would just want to make sure that we weren't creating just a significant nightmare for that particular section, especially in the light of the fact that that's a relative new traffic pattern design in that area. So, thank you very much. And that was really the only question I had on that, um, right now. And then, uh, based on what we have coming from public opinion or, uh, public comment, uh, I may have some questions after that. So thank you very much.
Okay, so, back to Beniana Council. Um, and, uh, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. I'll ask Lauren to check in with you to see if anyone wants to comment on the site. Laurie Alderman, go ahead.
Um, the, I, I support most of this. It's the blanket, um, expansion, um, till the COVID emergency is done that I would support. Um, some of these proj- you, you're asking businesses, but you're not asking the taxpayers and the citizens of the city, um, what they want. Um, yes, of course, the businesses are gonna wanna, um, toll the, um, toll, toll the, all the permits and all that. And, um, it, it can leave you guys with no work because everybody's gonna wait until, uh, um, until the toll, toll, because they've been given an extra eighteen months. Some of these projects have been in the works since, like, 2006. I think that it should be by individual, um, extensions and, um, brought to camp, council. I feel sorry for people like Colvin Group, Poor Old Colvin Boot Group, uh, that have, um, and ones that have, like, the city investment of the $750,000. I can see those coming, but things like the hotel should be given when it may not ever recover, um, to be able to have that eighteen months for, um, financing that, when they did it. Um, either that, or I think you should, um, if you are going to, um, do this broad, um, extension, uh, tolling of the, is you need to then take cuts to the community serv- community development department. I adore Noah and JP, but you're having full services and not having any building projects because they're, um, because they're, it is, sorry, um, because there's of COVID, then, then you need to take, make cuts because it's not fair to the taxpayers to have to pay for full services when you've made it so that, um, everybody gets to toll the, uh, anyways, you know what I mean? Okay, thank you, that's it.
Marjorie Crump Shear, go ahead.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I'm, I don't know that I was able to follow this as thoroughly as perhaps I should have, given my questions. But when I first saw, um, food truck rodeo, I thought, "That sounds like an interesting and fun event." And then as the discussion moved on, I thought, "But wait a minute. Our current businesses are current, are very vulnerable and are hurting." And so I have two questions. Why is, was this discussed? What was, what's the goal for this event? And the other is, why now? And I don't expect those answers at this meeting, but I'm putting them out there. That's it, thank you.
Will Proudie, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to comment in as a resident of Henry Street. Uh, I live right across of, uh, Old Redwood Highway, uh, Henry, so any extension of, uh-
Will, if you can still hear us, we may have lost you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You can hear me, okay, great. Um, did you hear anything of what I said? I'll start over. Um, so I'm a downtown resident. I live on Henry Street, right near Old Redwood Highway. So I just have, uh, strong safety concerns about, uh, increased, uh, numbers of people in downtown, dining outdoors without masks, um, if, uh, this allows bars to reopen and significant numbers of people to be, uh, drinking. You know, it's a real concern. Um, these wouldn't be activities that I would choose to participate in, but given my locality, it kind of makes me feel a little bit trapped in my own home, um, and unable to go outside, uh, safely. So I just want the council to really consider local resident safety and, um, take into account the community's concerns before pursuing any action on this. That's all.
Mayor Skilman, that will do it for public comment. Hey, thank you for the comments. And we bring it back to the council for some follow-up or comments that folks mentioned that they had in the first part. Uh, so Councilmember Landman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, uh, Noah, I wanted to ask, so first of all, I'm very supportive of the concept of tolling. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I'm fine with a flexibility option. If my colleagues want to go the other way, I think that's workable. But I think in this most unexpected, of unexpected circumstances that the world and our local businesses and developers have found themselves in, this is probably a time where we can be flexible, still follow the letter of the law and be safe, we should do it. So I'm definitely fine with that. I did want to touch base on the food truck rodeo. I'm open to the concept. I noticed the first thing I thought when reading the packet was, I understood why it shouldn't be right in the core of the downtown by our businesses. Because if we do not have enough local food trucks and we have to bring them from the outside, then what we're doing is bringing in competition that will hurt the businesses we're really wanting to help. So I guess my caveats would be, number one, it's fine to look for other areas. But, uh, you mentioned, for example, I noticed the west side. And I will just use my neighborhood as an example, but any residential neighborhood might not be a logical place for something like this, I suspect. Uh, I would be curious perhaps to hear your thoughts on, if we don't have enough local food trucks to make this work, as Ms. Shear said, Ms. Crump Shear said, "Why now?" It doesn't seem to make sense other than it might be something fun for a neighborhood if we put it over by the train station. But then, are we not perhaps, uh, limiting those businesses from getting their takeout that they might normally get in the downtown? So in any, what I'm asking, and I guess I'm commenting on is, I would like to see, I'm open to both supporting this tonight completely. But I'm hoping the food truck rodeo concept will be fleshed out very thoroughly and come back to this before any firm decisions are made in it. Because I, I have some concerns about that one item a bit. So I, I think those are the comments I wanted to make. I want to thank you for the time you put into working on this and trying to make this go forward. And again, I recognize the great difficulty in meeting all the needs involved here. And I appreciate the effort you're putting into it.
I'm happy to answer any, or to follow up on that if that's requested by the council.
If, if you'd, if you'd like to follow up with some of that, it's fine. It was more of a statement, but if you'd like to talk a little bit more about the food trucks, maybe that would be helpful for us. Thank you, Noah.
Yeah, so, uh, as was pointed out, you know, I am also aware of only two existing businesses who have food trucks, uh, Me Pueblo and, uh, Wingman. Both of them are, are very interested in kind of expanding their reach and location, um, with utilizing their trucks. There's one other downtown restaurant that I've heard has a truck, but I'm not sure, uh, if that's the case. And I, I've reached out to them, I, I was able to, to meet with them today, but just briefly to say, "Let's follow up for a conversation." So I don't want to name names without being sure. But it is, it's kind of twofold. One, that was an idea more targeting the residents than the businesses. Um, the idea was just to give folks another option. Uh, in my conversations with Wingman, um, you know, there are some Sonoma County food truck folks who, that's their pure business model. That's all they do is food truck, uh, activities at different events, uh, wineries, weddings, and the, the festival circuits, et cetera. And you can imagine, uh, how those folks are hurting. Um, and so the idea was kind of twofold. One, allow our existing folks who have those services, or as was mentioned, maybe have a cart, uh, to set up and, and give themselves a different venue, but that would be a limited number. Uh, two, provide some, uh, interest and just options for, uh, some of our residents to maybe, you know, uh, go to a food truck that they normally would go to when they were at an event or something, but they're not able to. And so just to kind of introduce some, uh, more local options, uh, at a limited nature, at a location that's not, uh, close to the downtown. Uh, and then three, just kind of, uh, you've heard me talk about this idea of synergy before, but, but if there is an interest in that, you know, you know something's gonna occur, you might choose to come to Catati, uh, even if you lived in Roder Park or maybe Pen Grove or something, to go to one of these trucks that you knew had food you like, you knew them, uh, maybe it was a little closer to your house, or like I said, maybe you hadn't seen them in a while because they, they haven't been at any of the normal events. Uh, and, and give that option to folks, um, to be able to do that on a limited term, uh, but also, um, you know, basically broaden out what's allowed. And so that's the idea. You come to town, maybe you don't live in town, you might go to a few other places, you might, uh, go to a few other businesses. Uh, so it was just an idea to generate some activity, uh, was the concept.
Well, I, like I said, I, I think you're going in the right direction. I think working with our local businesses as well as our local, uh, truck, food truck businesses and seeing what we can structure that will probably get us the right place. I have to admit, with the place we're in right now, I too have some concerns. I'm not quite as excited about the idea of bringing in residents from another city to get services from a truck, a food truck that is perhaps from another city in our town right now. I don't know if that's beneficial, but I do think that this is certainly something worth looking into. So I, I appreciate those comments and I'll look forward to seeing what you bring back.
I was gonna comment as well, too, that, uh, we've got some interesting crossover since we just voted tonight about, um, opening up the, uh, park and ride for a drive, drive-in theater concept. Um, that's a great opportunity for the two local businesses that have food trucks to, uh, sell their wares out there, um, to all of our local folks. All right, and I see Councilmember Delosso put your hands up, so go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Skilman. And yes, that was one of my talking points I was just gonna bring up. So thank you for saying that, what you did. Um, let me go back and, uh, well, first of all, I just, I really want to thank, you know, Noah and everybody at City Hall for having an interest in our businesses. And we know how they've all been impacted during our, this pandemic. And, um, it's, I, I really appreciate staff's concern for the whole community by helping out these businesses. And I understand that for some of the businesses, it just may not be feasible. And for a variety of reasons that I'm not gonna get into right now, but I, I get that as well. Um, going back to the rodeo, I keep calling it the rodeo because you guys put that name in my head and it really conjures up something very different than what I want to talk about. But, um, you know, locations, I'm not too concerned about locations. There's probably a handful of locations between, uh, one or two on the west side and several, uh, over on, on the, um, the eastern side of our city, but not in the downtown area. And that can all be worked out pretty well. Um, I, I still have a concern about any potential unintended consequences that could come up from, uh, as my colleagues have said, especially Councilmember Landman was just bringing up, the, um, the competition factor of bringing in food service from somewhere else. Um, I, I do get that bringing those food trucks, let's say, from other cities. I know Petaluma has a wildly successful food truck court, um, that they set up. Um, I have been to it personally and it's, there's just an amazing array of what goes on over there. But, and I get the point that maybe bringing some people in and they will see other parts of Catati and maybe then make a trip back here and utilize one of our restaurants or one of our stores that, uh, is not a food-oriented store. So, so I don't want to let go of this idea. I, I still think it needs, um, a little more work, a little more massaging, but I really don't want to let go of it at this point in timing. And, um, so I, I, again, and I, I think, I mean, I think it shows an awful lot, uh, about our city staff and how they care about the businesses here in town. So again, I just want to thank you, um, publicly one more time on that. And I, I want to keep this, uh, these ideas moving forward. Because I think maybe if, um, if some of the, I'm going back to restaurants, some of the restaurants actually see success being bred from some of these other, uh, food trucks that come in, that may give them an impetus to possibly, "Well, let's give it a shot. Let's, we're gonna prepare for this one day and we're gonna have a tent set up at some location and we're gonna do our best to put everything together." It can be done, it is extra work. And the question is, you know, are those businesses willing to take that chance? Thank you.
All right, and that's the Vice Mayor Moore. You've got your hands up, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Um, thank you, Noah, for that, uh, information and the work that you guys- Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Thank you, Noah, for that information and the work that you guys have put into that. I appreciate the outreach going out to the businesses. I also have some concerns with the food truck rodeo. I think as Councilman Lyman and Councilman Delloso have expressed, it needs to be flushed out a little bit more. I do consider the first do no harm approach. And the proximity of the businesses that have food trucks to another location within the city that may not be at the core is relatively close to their existing business. So I don't know that the economic benefits of that to the business would be significant. Of course, not having that information, it's hard to tell, but I, guesstimating that, I can't see that that's going to be a huge economic stimulus for them. In reference to the expiration of the toll, I don't have an issue with December 31st, 2021. As we've indicated previously on some of the other things that we have done, I don't think that there's anything that would preclude us from potentially ending that sooner if the situation allowed for that. And I would direct that question maybe to John Barker or Damian Obit. I think we still have that capability, even if we were to put something in to October of 2021. And I think supporting something like this is exactly what the taxpayers and citizens of the community would like. Because if we don't have a viable business community, then we're in an even greater economic collapse than we currently are. So those were my comments on that, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm done for now.
All right, and I see Councilmember Harvey. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the comments that have been made. I guess I'm still kind of struggling with the whole tolling date and the emergency declaration. I guess part of me wants to say that I like the six months because it does kind of put a date after that. The part that bothers me about that is you still have no certainty because we don't know when that emergency will be undeclared. So part of me likes a date certain that can be revised, so that way we can keep our eye on that date, and that if something changes, then we can adjust accordingly. So I'm not really, you know, deathly strong one way or the other, but I do like the concept of having a certain date that people can hang their hat on. I like all the ideas that have been put forth. I agree that the rodeo probably needs a little bit more work. And the concern about safety of patrons in downtown, my understanding is that we are not opening things that are not able to be open, given the health orders. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. Nothing we're proposing, everything we're proposing would have to comply with all elements of the health order.
So that includes bars that don't serve food, and that includes the requirements for folks wearing masks, correct?
Absolutely correct.
So I just wanted to be clear on that. So again, thank you for working with the businesses. I think it's great that you're continuing to work with the businesses and the developers and the citizens, because I think that we're kind of all in this together. And the way we get through this is to help one another. And we help one another as citizens by supporting the businesses. We also help by supporting, you know, future development of whatever in our community. So I like the things that are coming forth and the flexibility. So thank you for that, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And, you know, I would just say, too, I'm fine with either timeline, but I understand that it's helpful for folks who are trying to get extensions on permitting or things like that. It would be helpful to have a date certain, the October 2021 date. That helps facilitate that, and that would include.
Madam Mayor, if I might, one other approach to this might be to say.
You cut out, John.
Oh, sorry about that. I was going to suggest that, you know, you could leave in the uncertain time expiration based on the date the emergency is over. But you could say, in addition, let no earlier than October 31st, 2021. And I think that would sort of serve both purposes. So if the, if the emergency is continued for over a year from now, then the tolling would continue, and it would go beyond October 31st, 2021. I think it would provide the certainty you're looking for and also deal with the scenario where the emergency just persists for a longer period of time than everyone's anticipated.
Okay, no, that's helpful. We can always just add that bit of language to the motion that's decided to go forward tonight. I'm looking through my notes to see if there's anything else I was going to comment on. Oh, and just what I was going to say, too, is that, Noah, what I appreciate is that this has been a dialogue. We've done, we've been, you know, folks on economic development coming up with ideas and then proposing them to the businesses, seeing, would this be helpful, or would it not be helpful, what are some of your ideas? I just think it's great to have that dialogue instead of just, this is what we're going to do. It's basically, here are some options that we're presenting to you, and you let us know what would work best. So it's great to have that built in flexibility. So thank you very much for all of the work putting this together. I see two more hands up, so I will assume there are additional comments. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I was going to go ahead and take a stab at a resolution, making a motion unless there are some other further comments from other councilmembers.
I see one other hand up, so let me check quickly. Councilmember Lynn.
I was just thinking like the Vice Mayor, so when we get to that point, I'd be happy to second it. And I'm certainly open to Mr. Barker's recommendation. I think that covers all of our concerns, I believe. So that would be the direction I would hope we go with our resolution.
All right, so Vice Mayor Moore, I don't see any other hands up, so if you want, I'm going to take a stab at the language for the motion. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. So I would make a motion that we adopt, the city of Katati adopt a resolution to extend the past flexibility and use of outdoor areas, increase the funding to support the local business community to $90,000, and to toll the expiration of all entitlements and permit approvals for six months beyond the expiration of COVID-19 or October 31st, 2021, which either one, whichever comes first, and support the community during the unprecedented economic impacts of COVID-19 viral pandemic. Sands the rodeo truck options for now.
Madam Mayor, I want to just clarify that the motion was not whichever comes earlier, but whichever occurs later. So you could have a scenario where the emergency expires after October 31st, 2021, and I think you wanted to cover that scenario.
So I think that, I think the wording was emergen, it would expire at the emergency plus six months, but no earlier than October 31st, 2021.
Exactly.
That would be my intended motion.
Okay, so with that amendment, amended motion, I'll see if there's a second.
I'd still be happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. I'll ask for a simple call vote. Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman. Yes, thank you. All right, so we show that's a five more votes.
Madam Mayor, if I.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm assuming, Noah, that you'll be bringing something back a little bit more flushed out on the truck rodeo.
Absolutely. I'll continue to explore and discuss with the various businesses. And if there seems to be some good ideas that are in keeping with the direction of the council, we'll come back with those ideas further flushed out to present to the council and the community to hear input and see if there is some support for that idea.
Thank you, Mr. House. Thank you, Mayor Skilman.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it may be interesting to see the first time you've had a drive-in theater that works out well for the folks with food trucks, if that sort of satisfies what they're looking for. So I'll be curious to hear further information after that event. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item 11B, Home Sonoma Leadership Council Governments. I believe this is, maybe no, is this you?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So while Moore unloads the presentation, I'll just give a little introduction. So as we all know, homelessness is a very challenging issue. And it faces all of us in Sonoma County, and addressing it really requires a substantial, well-coordinated effort among many entities, including the county, cities, health providers, and hospitals, nonprofits serving those experiencing homelessness and others. And recently, there have been some changes to the governance structure, at least in parts of it, and also major new funding sources that have been made available by the state. But one of the issues that comes up, of course, is the fragmented structure for policy setting and allocated funding, which is really what this is about tonight. All right, so there's an organization called Home Sonoma County. And it came about because there's a federal requirement for regional governance. It's what they call continuum of care. And that parlance, and historically in this county, the continuum of care consisted of nonprofit service providers. And so the federal and state funding decisions were made by these nonprofits. And a couple of years ago, there was some concern about just the, it wasn't as well-coordinated as it could be. There was potential conflicts of interest with funding. And then the local government ultimately had the responsibility, but no authority over the decisions, many of the decisions being made. And, of course, the regional perspective for coordinating the funding has been an ongoing issue. So in 2018, Home Sonoma County was formed, and it was designed by an ad hoc from the Board of Supervisors in Santa Rosa, the medium and small cities, including Katati. So medium and small cities, basically, that means every city in the county except for Santa Rosa and Petaluma were not included. And the theory is, is that they're represented by, so Katati and all the other small cities are represented by the Board of Supervisors because the county receives all of the funding on our behalf. And so therefore, they are supposed to represent all the, what they call, non-entitlement cities. The entitlement cities are the ones that receive funding directly, typically over 50,000 in population. And so the entitlement cities, the two cities I mentioned earlier are Santa Rosa and Petaluma, and then, of course, the county gets, they're entitled, they're an entitlement jurisdiction as well and get funding. And all the cities, not just Katati, but all the cities outside of the entitlement cities, basically join together with the county and provide all of the funding through the county to do the services. And the service providers would remain deeply involved through an ad hoc. Some of the roles of Home Sonoma County was to try to establish a countywide policy-setting body and really focus on the housing first as the approach, addressing encampments and setting priorities for accessing shelters. And trying to align, unify funding decisions, and ultimately really just trying to own the issue so that there could be focused attention on what's a really pressing issue for the, not only this county, but many counties in the state of California. So this is the Home Sonoma structure that was established in 2018. There's a leadership council of nine members, the technical advisory committee of 25 members, and then a whole bunch of subcommittees you can see there. So the, this is the leadership council, so the people that sit on that council are two supervisors, so currently it's Hopkins and Warren. A, two council members from Santa Rosa, because the county and Santa Rosa always have to be equal. So you have Mayor Schulte and Oliveras on the leadership council. And then one person from Petaluma, Councilmember McDonald. And then there's four seats left on that, on that body for technical advisory committee members in two-year terms. So according, in accordance with HUD requirements, you need people with lived experience, in other words, people that have experienced homelessness. So two members there, there's one nonprofit, and then one representative from medium and small cities. And currently, that representative is Don Schwartz from the city of Roder Park. But that's a, these are all rotating seats. There's no permanent representation for the other cities. And again, this is under the theory that the county represents our interests because they receive. So the question of creating a permanent seat for, for small and medium cities has come up before, as you guys all know. And the leadership council voted 6-1 against adding any seats for the other cities. The arguments at the time were that, that the county represents you, so you don't need your own seat. And then also, also, some members, I think, felt that, in particular, like the Santa Rosa city council members, felt that the redesign leadership council hadn't been given enough time to really see if it would succeed as it was constituted at that time. Back in February 2020, the mayors and council members, it seems like a lifetime ago, but the mayors and council members supported a greater role for cities in the leadership council and supported exploring the possibility of a new lead agency reporting to the leadership council and not to the county. So the leadership agency, when I, the lead agency, when I say that, is the administrating agency. And right now, the county's community development commission is the lead agency for Home Sonoma. So they're providing essentially the staff support for that. And there's, as we'll talk about in a minute, there's been a lot of, I guess there's been a widespread feeling among the TAC members and also now with the leadership council members, maybe absent the Sonoma County supervisors, but the others, that, that the CDC hasn't been dedicating adequate resources to support it. And the governance structure itself is, is maybe not inclusive enough. And the TAC is, and all the subcommittees is just unwieldy to try to manage because there's not adequate staff support for that level of, that level of TAC and subcommittees. So the county and some leadership council members now are more supportive of all the cities on the board. And again, you know, the idea here is that homelessness is a regional issue, it's not a city-specific issue. So all the, all the members, all the, basically all the cities should be at the table trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the county overall, not in particular city. So in this, um, in this current year, the TAC has not met, and, um, again, many of the TAC members were concerned about limited roles, um, not enough support, so on, they just, hasn't really worked out well, from, uh, TAC members' perspectives that I have heard from. The county has provided inadequate staff support, including during the pre-pandemic time period. The county has established an internal outreach team and the county's proposed to take over the coordinated entry on Thor, um, and the county does appear, does appear to be moving, some of the homelessness roles to the health department, which I think all these were contributing factors to some of the concerns. So fragmented funding decisions are still an issue, even, um, with this new structure. There's, you know, and homelessness and all the other related issues around it, it's kind of an alphabet soup of funding streams, and so Home Sonoma only has access to some of those, and so, um, the funding is fragmented, and I think coordination probably still has a long ways to go. There is a ballot measure, I think as everyone knows, on the ballot for November 3rd to, and if it passed, it would add funding to address mental health and homelessness, um, the county would still retain control of that funding if it were approved by the voters. The county did propose a new governance structure and recently added some Department of Health Services staff to support the leadership council, I think partly in response to the complaints that the TAC members and others were, were, uh, expressing to the county, and the county claims authority to decide on the new governance structure, which is, is a, is an item of debate, because the, um, uh, there's a, there's, um, actually in the formation documents for the Home Sonoma, it explicitly says that Home Sonoma can decide on the governance structure and there's, let's just say there's split opinions on that particular question. So, um, this is what the county recently proposed, um, like I said, the county has recently come to the, um, come to support the idea of every city having a seat at the, on this council, and, you know, although before they were resistant to that idea. The county's, so the county's proposed structure that they've been floating is still a couple, two representatives from the county, two representatives from Santa Rosa, um, adding a representative for the city of Petaluma, and then one representative each from each one of the, um, non-entitlement cities, including Catati in this case. Two representatives from community members with lived experience, again, that's a requirement for the funding. And then, um, uh, something that the county, I think, brought up is this municipal advisory committee, the county has municipal advisory committees in various parts of the county, like out on the coast, Urnville, out in Sonoma Valley, so there's these advisory committees that they're proposing to add, and I think, um, they're probably adding it just to balance the board with people that are, uh, known to the county and would represent the county's interests in this governance structure. Another thing that you'll notice is that the TAC has been, um, uh, that 25-member TAC is, and all those, all those adhocs or those little subcommittees have been condensed into really what they think are the most important, um, elements. And, um, I think the goal there was to try to make it so that it would actually, those people could, could be engaged in useful decision-making, actually something from an administrative standpoint. So, in the packet, you'll see a couple, there's a couple attachments. One is a letter from St. Joseph's Health, and so, um, St. Joseph's Health has, um, volunteered in the emails in the packet to, um, through an independent third party, conduct the study and look at, um, what a lead agency should, should, uh, look like, including the county of Sonoma, um, their CDC is, you know, one of the potential options, but looking at what might be the best practice for a lead agency to manage, um, whatever new governance structure comes up. And then also, um, also look at this issue of who ultimately has the authority to decide, who can decide what the governance structure looks like, the county claims that they have, county supervisors have that authority and the, um, Home Sonoma Board feels like, um, they have the authority, so the study would, would, um, would vet that out and hopefully come to a conclusion there. There is a, there is a general feeling that, um, that there's a lack of funding in these areas and that ultimately, uh, whatever lead agency, whether it continues to be the CDC or some other, um, other group, that, um, reports directly to the Home Sonoma, and I think that's a, I think that's an important element that I've been hearing from numerous people, is that the lead agency, the supporting agency, um, reports to the governing body of this organization and not to some other governing body, like the CDC currently does to the Board of Supervisors. But, again, that'll be flushed out with the study that St. Joseph's Health does if they move forward with that. But anyway, the, the lead agency, um, there's a current feeling that these funding sources that support homeless services don't provide enough administrative costs, and so there would be likely a need to add, um, in addition to the funding that's already passed through each city to the county to support these services, add supplemental, um, funding at some point. And I think that's, um, that's an issue that is, is, um, it's very, you know, it very likely could be true, um, I think there's also though, a lot of work in dealing with the fragmentation of the, uh, the services and the, and the existing funding that probably needs to be fully flushed out by, uh, what will be an ad hoc that they also want to form, so. There is, there are some letters in the packet from other cities that have already, discussed this issue, I will say that the, um, the city of Sebastopol is not in the packet, they have already, um, discussed the issue, is my understanding, I have not seen their letter, but I think it's largely the same as the others in the packet, with the exception of, um, not making a decision on the funding yet, until, um, until we're further along in the, you know, in what the new governance structure looks like and, um, and what the funding streams that are dedicated to this new structure would be, and then, and then determining what the funding gap would be and deciding that. So there's a, there is a letter, a draft letter, that's in the packet, and the actions that are being requested tonight specifically are, um, authorizing the mayor to send the letter substantially in that form that's attached to the packet to the leadership council. Appoint a council member to the ad hoc, that's going to be, uh, likely for me to start looking at these issues, both the governance structure, but also lead agency and who has the authority on the governance looks like. And, um, in that letter, uh, there's a couple highlighted paragraphs, and those are just for consideration. Under the, uh, under the proposed governance structure that was put forward by the county, a highlighted section in the letter, and this is on packet page 318, uh, the draft letter that is proposed for tonight to be sent to the leadership council, um, the first one is that, um, that the city council has had concerns, if you do, about, um, including municipal advisory committees as board members. Again, I think the county added that just to, um, provide some friendly support on the board for them. But they're not, they're not, um, they're not vested interests like the cities are in these, in these issues, although they do have, of course, impacts, but in theory the county could represent them. Anyway, an issue for discussion, and then, um, the other is the issue about funding, and, um, there's a highlighted section there. The two options to consider are take an approach like Sebastopol where we just kind of get a little further into the process before we, um, commit or, um, do a commitment like some of the other cities have done where they, um, commit, but only contingent on sort of the satisfactory outcomes of all these discussions. I think, you know, my recommendation would be that we, um, don't commit yet, that we get into a discussion and vet out what the governance structure looks like, what the lead agency looks like, um, you know, what the funding streams that are going to be dedicated to this, uh, new governing body are, and then see what the funding gaps are at that point, and then, you know, have a discussion when we have more information. Um, so, with that, I would be happy to answer it.
Okay, so first, we'll get back to council, see if there are any questions for staff. I see, um, Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
I have lots of comments, but I want to wait till after public comment, because I know that there's at least one individual in the audience that is probably much more, um, has much more information on this, but my question, what I was struggling with is these, uh, municipal advisory committees, so what is their accountability and are they an organization that, that should, if we move forward with this governance structure, would they be able to support funding, whatever the new structure is?
So, yeah, yeah, so I, I, I don't know, and I suppose they could, um, try to raise funding on some basis, I, but I, I believe that they are appointed by the Board of Supervisors to advise on issues specific to certain geographic regions of the unincorporated county. I don't believe that they're organized in a, in, you know, have their own funding sources.
So they're not elected, they're not a organization, um, that really has any accountability to anybody but the county that appointed them, is that fair?
It's, it is, it is my understanding that they're appointed by the supervisors to advise the supervisor or supervisor on issues in these geographic regions.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the only thing that concerns me, again, I, I would want to know a lot more information, is, you know, on the groundwater basin, um, uh, board, you know, we have some of these, uh, municipal water districts, and, and it's a struggle for them because they have solid structures, but they don't have really funding mechanisms that can help, and so if everybody's asked to step up, you know, to fund, you know, it, it, it's a struggle, um, for them to do that, so, so that would be a, a concern with that. Um, I have many more comments, but, um, that was kind of my question, how they got there, that one just seemed like an odd, an odd fit there, but thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, and, uh, Councilmember Lynn, go ahead.
Yeah, like my colleague, I think I have a lot more comments and discussion, uh, perhaps about this, but I do have one question, which seems pretty important to me, um, looking at the situation that we're dealing with, having a, a third-party arbiter that is not involved, it is as fair as possible, probably is the best hope of trying to come to some consensus, uh, I do not have the background of working with St. Joseph's, I hesitate to ask this, and I don't mean it to sound, uh, to have any degree of shape, but I'm just wondering what certainty we have from the staff perspective or a working group perspective that St. Joseph's has the right background, experience, and is free from encumbrances with any of us, that puts them in a good position to help us as a third-party arbiter?
So, um, my understanding is that they themselves wouldn't be doing the, um, study, they, it would be a third-party consultant, but they would, they have offered to fund the study.
Well, I think that... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, in that, in that the, uh, that the scope, which essentially is outlined by the email that's attached, um, would be, and the work products would be reviewed by an ad hoc group.
Okay, I, I, I think that's helpful, it's certainly, I, I, I would look at it as more of a glass half-full than half-empty, I remember in the run-up to the groundwater agencies, though the consultants that were hired did seem to get the scales in the direction of the people that hired them, uh, so that's, just having a third-party consultant isn't always the answer, and anything more to discuss after this, but thanks for helping lay that out, that helps a little bit.
All right, and I'm not seeing any other hands, uh, council members with questions, so I will ask, uh, Lauren, would you please check to see if there are any attendees that would like to make public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Hi, this is Adrian Lobby, and, uh, as many of you know, I'm a member of Homeless Actions, Sonoma County Homeless Action, which is a grassroots group of people who are trying to do something about homelessness, and, uh, I've been deep into the leadership council drama, I have to congratulate Amy and Obed for, uh, being able to just put this all together in a report that is pretty accurate, um, it's, it's been a homing mess, frankly, it was intended to make it simpler, and it didn't make it simpler, it's logged everything down, the, the leadership council has been completely inept at dealing with homelessness in this crisis, um, so that people end up, the people who have dealt with it has been the county staff or the city of Santa Rosa staff, and they haven't coordinated with each other as they were supposed to through the leadership council. So, uh, what Amy had said about the technical advisory groups, they haven't been consulted and their wonderful expertise has been just gone to waste. So, one thing I wanted to say about the MAC, uh, that was a little bit inaccurate, that, that, those seats are there because the West County has a lot of unincorporated cities, and they have, would have no, um, they would have no representation on this board, so it's an attempt by Linda Hopkins, Supervisor Hopkins, to get her district adequately represented, and perhaps for the Sonoma districts as well, on that end of the county. I, I really oppose having all of you cities sit on this board and making the board bigger, I think the problem right now is that the board is somewhat, one of the problems is the board's too big, uh, so I don't think that's a great idea, I do think St. Joseph's should go, if they're willing to fund this thing, um, you know, Mr. Landman's point is well-taken, but I don't think St. Joseph's has a huge, um, I think they basically want to take care of more people better, uh, and that's for the benefit of the hospitals as much as anything, uh, because, you know, the hospitals have an enormous, um, cost to having a lot of homeless people in the county. Catati has pretty much punted on homeless, helping homeless people, so I'm not sure that, it, it would be a big leap for you all to decide to do some funding for an independent agency and get involved on a board, um, it's probably good if you would do that, because maybe you would start to realize what people need here in the city, and we would start funding some services here in the city, but, um, I just warn you, it's a swamp, and if you put your foot in there, you're going to get sucked in, and it's a drama. Thank you for listening to me.
Marjorie Crump shares, go ahead.
My background for 33 years was in public education, um, special education as a teacher and administrator, uh, and then, uh, as an elementary principal, and while the issue of homelessness is very compelling, the one thing that strikes me with regard to the government, governant, governance, is the size of the group, and so I want to underscore what Adrian has, has just said, um, in my experience, the larger the group, the more issues and problems and the less resolution. In my experience, the larger the group, the more issues and problems, and the less resolution. And so my concern is that people really want to support and help, but there's got to be a clear, productive group that can do that. And yes, the cities most affected need to have some kind of input into what that is. But I, I am perhaps naively very concerned about the number of people that are being talked about here to meet, to solve the issues and problems, and to meet the needs of the people. Thank you.
Mayor Skilman, that'll be for public comment. All right, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council comments, and it's like Councilmember DeLasso, put your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Just addressing that last comment from Ms. Crump Shears, and also from Adrian, but the history in this county for many, many years, and I've been involved with the council for 14 years, but that also spans about close to a 30-year period. The size of the group, I, I agree with, when you get an unwieldy size of a group, whether it's a board of directors or whatever, it can be very difficult to make decisions in some, sort of a timely manner. However, the history in this county is that the county of Sonoma and the city of Santa Rosa are always the dominant players, and as we have found time and time again, all of the resources will end up going to them. Now, I'm not saying it may not be warranted in certain situations, but that is why you see this issue in front of us tonight. And if you go back even in just the last, say, eight to 10 years, I can come up with four or five other issues through JPA processes where if the other cities didn't get involved, and in one instance where I was directly involved, literally fighting the county and the city of Santa Rosa, saying, "No, you cannot have two representatives on this board, there needs to be one. We need to have an equal balance of all of the jurisdictions." And so I think that's why you see this issue in front of us tonight. And first of all, we realize that it is ineffective, what's been going on right now. And I don't know that a larger board serving this issue will become more effective. I, I don't have a whole heck of a lot of confidence on that. I mean, we need to be more doers and not, you know, stringing things out because, well, we need to go back and check, and we need to go back and check. So I understand where your comments are coming from. I also understand that there is this history in this county where there's two dominant players, and they don't always like to share their toys. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, yeah. And Councilmember Landman, go ahead, put your hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, it's a swamp. I, I, I think I'd agree with that. So to start, yeah, the current governance structure clearly is flawed. We have an ongoing unavoidable issue by using county staff that we've seen in other places is always problematic. The 25-member tack goes beyond being unwieldy. And then again, the latest county proposal, again, very unwieldy, really loaded, frankly. And unfortunately, it seems to be crafted not so much to arrive at an equitable and functional governance structure, but more to just try to get numeric favor, or at least a numeric equity that will maintain control. And while I can understand that, it's not really helpful in the long run. I, I think a perfect example, and this is why I'm supportive of the staff recommendation where the cities are going on this, we have examples, Sonoma Clean Power is a perfect one. A board of 10, that's a small board, that's small, to be functional, clean, and effective. Every person having one vote. You could use a weighted voting system to allay the concerns of larger cities that might be concerned why they should have one vote when a city the size of Cloverdale or Katari has one. And that would mean that most of the time we would work well, and only occasionally perhaps have some knock-down, track-out slugfest silver issues. But we have a history of that. It's clean, and it is workable, and it's been done. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm definitely yes on the letter of support of that. I'm definitely yes on the recommendation to take a wait-and-see, though, on this. I think we definitely need to go forward to see if this can be made to work better, but I don't know if we need to jump in just yet until we know where we go with this. You know, just talking about reasonable sources, I recognize that often, frankly, most often, they really won't need to go to the county, to Santa Rosa, to the bigger areas that have the bigger problems. And I don't think we should get into this as, as a city, or as individual cities, just to compete, quote-unquote, for our share of the pot and takes them, if we don't have a compelling use for it. But I do also have concerns, I don't want to wind up in a position where our cities are subsidizing homeless efforts in the Russian River or in downtown Santa Rosa. And what I mean by this is, when we get to that point, I'd like to see as much evidence as we can that there'll be enough benefit to accrue that it will at least meet whatever costs we put into this, and we can make the argument to our constituents that there's value for our community, instead of just helping rock up the county, which is certainly overencumbered with responsibility right now. So I, I hope that's clear. I, I'm supportive of going forward with this. I do think, though, we need to go very slowly and make sure that we make this better, instead of making it worse, which has seemed to be what's happened, at least up to date with this.
All right, and Councilmember Harvey?
First of all, I'd like to thank Adrian for her comments. I thought she might have some insight into this. This was a, a difficult item. So on the first page, you know, we talk about cities being held accountable to residents to address issues such as homelessness. But it's really difficult to be held accountable and responsible when we lack authority over funding decisions, and even lack a seat at the table to be able to discuss what the possible solutions might be for our community. So that concerned me. Then we get into the funding, that, well, the county receives our funding, and we have no say in how, when, or where it'll be spent. I mean, we do, as Adrian pointed out, have issues that need to be addressed, but we don't have any say in the, as was pointed out by my colleagues, the county saying, "Oh, well, we'll take care of you, don't worry." We've seen that that doesn't always work for this. This is a county-wide issue, and I think that we need to address it as such. As was pointed out by my colleagues, we have other examples of things that we've done. I mean, as Councilmember Landman will certainly remember, we had quite a long and drawn-out fight to earn our seat on the Santa Rosa Groundwater Plane Board. But we fought, and we, you know, worked really hard to make sure that our voice was heard, because we are part of that groundwater also. So the other thing about allocating funds and it, and it all being so fragmented, this council will not be able to make much progress at all if it lacks the authority for the decisions and funding. So that, something has to happen, or, or no one is going to succeed on this. And then the lead agency, we know from the previous boards that the staff must report to the governing board, because they can't serve two masters. We've seen this happen before on other boards. And what ends up happening is the staff will do whatever it is for who is paying their paycheck. And that, it puts those folks in an unfortunate situation, and it's not really fair to them. We've had to do this with other boards, so it's not out of the question, and we have done it before. So I agree with my colleagues that we, we can, you know, tread lightly on this, but I think it's an important issue, and, and I think that unless we get involved, we are not going to make any progress at all. So that is how I feel about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Wow, an interesting situation. First of all, I don't have a concern on the size of the board in this particular suggestion with the municipal advisory committee not part of that, because I think if you have the municipal advisory committee, those people would be represented in the West County by Supervisor Hopkins, and over in the Sonoma area by Supervisor Warren. So if you eliminate that, now you've got two, four, six, eight, and seven, that's 15 board members. Seven of representing the smaller cities is very close to the remaining eight, if you had a situation, and then potentially you could have the community members with lived experience supporting the smaller cities if that were necessary on a particular vote. I currently serve on a board of 15 with Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Services, and although we were hesitant to expand that, every member city participating in that now has a vote, and we've actually done very well. Now, that aside, it's a different funding structure. So each member city funds the municipal pools proportionally to what their risk might be. If we were able to have a better funding structure where the organization in itself could make those decisions on how that's worked out, I think that would be a little bit better. But as, as Councilmember Harvey has indicated, you know, if, if we're part of that decision-making, we can be part of coming up with solutions and potentially helping to drag it out of the mirror of the swamp, so to speak. So those are some of my thoughts on that. I, I don't necessarily have a concern with the size of that board at 15, although it can be cumbersome, it's not insurmountable. And especially with a, with a situation that's so critical these days, you know, hopefully you can get people that might set aside their egos. Fingers crossed. And those are some of my thoughts on that. Thank you.
So one, one thing I'll add, just if it's useful or it's helpful information, is the county did propose, the county's proposal with the MACs, and also multiple representatives from the county, multiple Santa Rosa and Petaluma. This particular proposal, which, by the way, is also supported by Petaluma and Santa Rosa, or at least has been, is that there's one seat for all cities. So it wouldn't necessarily even be the county's structure that they proposed. It would be more like a Sonoma Clean Power structure, where you have the nine, one rep from each city, so nine reps, plus one from the county, plus, you know, with some lived experience seats. So it could even be less than 15. And, and I, you know, and I will just add, too, with regard to the funding, there's a lot, I think there's a lot of discussion that has to happen, both with the existing funding sources, because it really is sort of an alphabet soup of funding streams, and it's, it can take a while for everyone to wrap their heads around what's out there, what is currently not going to that body and could be potentially realigned and sent through that body as a decision-making, funding decision-making body. And then, really, I think, maybe at that point, having a more educated discussion about where those, where those gaps are, and what sort of assistance might be there. So, anyway, if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not seeing any more comments. I will bring it back and see if these couple are giving, making a motion.
Mayor Skilman, this is Councilmember Landman. I'd be happy to recommend that we move a motion authorizing the mayor to sign, well, excuse me, before we do that, I think you actually, I think we need discussion on deciding if we want to appoint a representative, too. Would that not be part of this?
That is, yes, part of deciding if we want to appoint a member to this ad hoc.
So I'm going to hold that thought for a minute, and I'm more than happy to do a motion, but I'm going to just pull that back from the table for a second. Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
No, that's fine. So, I mean, I think it was, as you just talked about, it might be a little premature to suggest to anybody, but let's see what the folks think. Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
If you needed to appoint a member, potential member, to this particular ad hoc, in light of what the situation is, and, and working with larger boards, and not having a concern about not being heard, I would be more than willing to potentially accept a nomination to this ad hoc committee, should it transpire.
And I will add that I think, I think the intent is to try to get an ad hoc member appointed, just to start the discussion with St. Joseph's, and sort of be on the ground floor, so to speak, in these discussions.
Okay, well, thank you for volunteering. Councilmember Harvey, put your hand up, don't you?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moore. I appreciate you stepping forward. My, my plate is a little on the full side, and I was willing to do it if no one stepped forward, but I believe that you have great experience with negotiating and working with large boards and stuff, and I personally appreciate you stepping forward to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. I recently had experience negotiating with 60 other members, and you live in the state of California, so it, it can be done. Thank you.
Well, with that, then, it's, I think, I'm not hearing any other voices, and I think we're all saying, "Thank you, Vice Mayor Moore," because no one wanted to quite put their feet in this swamp, and you jumped right in, so we're appreciative. So I would, again, move a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a letter to the Sonoma Leadership Council regarding homelessness governance in Sonoma County, following the form of other cities as shown in our packet, and to appoint as our representative to any potential ad hoc for these discussions, Vice Mayor John Moore.
I'll second that.
Okay, so just, just before we have a vote, just to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on that. Based on the discussion, it sounded like under item one, there was some concerns about the, at least the county-proposed governance board. And then on the second one, endorsing St. Joseph's offer to conduct the independent review, that we don't want to include that last highlighted sentence quite yet, until we go down the road a little bit more. Was that, was my interpretation of the discussion, yeah?
That was at least the tenor of the... That was at least the tenor of the motion I was making. I was I was more supportive of the direction I saw listed in the letters from the other cities, the latest direction I would call it as opposed to the county's more recent proposal. Certainly open to having Saint Saint Joseph's fund and help mediate this issue and agreed that we were beyond making a representative to the ad hoc, we were also, how did we put it, moving slowly on this issue to wait and see how it develops, but certainly working to see where it might lead.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, my understanding is to send that letter to the Home Sonoma County Leadership Council with our inclusive of our highlights there of our concerns. So that would be my second supporting that as well.
Okay, so this, so both highlighted, sentences included is what you're saying.
That's what I would support.
Could you re, make sure I'm understanding this correctly since I'm actually making this motion? Could you read back those two highlighted sentences to me one more time, City Manager Obit? Apologies.
Yeah, no.
It's pocket page three eighteen, do you have that helpful?
Thank you.
Yeah, pocket page three eighteen. So the end of paragraph numbered one, and this is, the paragraph is, the Home Sonoma County Leadership Council should include one seat in each jurisdiction. That last sentence, which is highlighted, says, the city council has concerns about the size of the proposed new governance board, referencing what the county had proposed, particularly the inclusion of the municipal advisory committees as well.
Yeah, I see them now. I've got them both, yes. Thank you. I would concur, I'd be happy to accept those amendments.
Great, okay, so inclusion of both. Thank you.
Okay, if Lauren, if we can take a roll call vote. Councilmember Delosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes, thank you. That's five votes.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delosso, may I make a statement?
Yes, please, go ahead.
It looks like we're just before the ten o'clock hour. We still have one agenda item plus report out, so as is our policy, I would like to make a motion to extend our meeting past ten P M.
This is Councilmember Harvey, I'd second that motion.
Okay, now, thank you very much. So can we please take a roll call vote going past ten? Councilmember Delosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Because we can't be unanimous on everything, no.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes. Okay, so it's a four one vote in favor, thank you. So with that, we will move on to item. Ah, I lost my page. Item eleven B. No, wait, no, that's what we just did. Aha, see what happens if I turn ahead. Eleven C, Council Chamber Web-Based Meeting Integration. We'll turn again to, or to Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is a fairly, much more, I mean, the last couple. So currently, we we have, we have an A V system that has some older parts in it. We also, in order to do the Zoom meetings, format meetings we're using now, we have to, basically takes two people and a mannequin juggling all the balls to kind of keep it going and it's not flexible enough to allow both an online meeting like this and also in person at the same time. So given the attendance in particular, you know, that we've seen throughout the COVID, that's been certainly a bright spot. We've had much better attendance. And I think that's in part due to the fact that people, you know, from the convenience of their own home can easily tune in and participate live without having to come down to the hall. At some point, the COVID thing will be over with and we're going to be resuming in-person meetings. And so this proposal really is about, A, kind of replacing some of that older equipment that that isn't as reliable anymore as it used to be. And so changing some of that out, but also, and maybe more importantly, B, adding the ability to to easily do online and in-person meetings concurrently so that if the council were to approve this, it would allow, when we're all back in the chamber, having in-person meetings, have attendees online, I can't specifically, live remotely, through a web-based platform. It's agnostic, it doesn't have to be Zoom. Zoom is the platform we're using now, but it, Facebook, YouTube, whatever. It just allows the ability to have a live component online to the meetings. We would also, of course, continue to do the web-based streaming that we do through our Granicus web portal. That's how we do our meeting packets and agenda management. So that would continue to be an option. And then also Channel twenty-eight, which is the cable channel. Would continue to be also another live feed, but of course, in both of those cases, they're non-participatory live feeds, they don't allow public to interact in the meetings. The difference, of course, with this is that it would allow live participation to the council meetings. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You still have to council first to see if there's any questions. Councilmember Delosso, go ahead.
Thank you, I think I hit my mute off. I did it too fast. So Damian, my only question is, there's clearly going to be an increase in workload for our city clerk. And not knowing, of course, you know, what all of that really means yet, have you strategized, you know, will there need to be a second person to do some of this work at the council meetings? Or, you know, I think the structure of the agenda may have to be looked at and possibly, I don't know, somehow changed slightly. I think there'll be more time involved and this is all good. I'm certainly in favor of it, but have, has the staff had an opportunity to put some time into that part of the discussion?
Well, I'll start off and then Lauren can chime in if she has anything to add. But certainly the agendas themselves will have to be, you know, maybe slightly hybridized from what we have now. I mean, obviously we'll have to include the login and, you know, password information and all that, like we do with these remote meetings. But the intent of, the intent of the of the work proposed is really to streamline everything and consolidate it so that it can be managed relatively seamlessly with one person at the, you know, being the clerk in this case. Of course, we'd also continue to have people in the back room running the A V for the, you know, the actual camera operators. But that was, you know, the idea is that when we go back to an in-person meeting, that it can be run basically by the same two people that ran it before. In a streamlined and more easily managed format than the sort of ad hoc setup that we have now just for this current situation. Sure, sure. I don't know, I don't know, Lauren, if you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Damian. I don't really have much more to add, other than it would streamline our process. And I think it would definitely give us a better ability to handle everything just at one desk and allow for the staff to come back, should they choose. And that's about it.
Okay, well, it sounds like you guys have at least put some thought into this because I think that part's important. So good, thank you very much.
And I'm not seeing any other hands raised with questions, so I will open it up to public comment and ask Lauren to check and see if anybody has comments on this item. Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Lauren Alderman, go ahead.
Hi, okay, the, I think you all need to be careful of expenses right now. This doesn't need to be done until we get back into the chambers and so I'm wondering if it can be delayed somehow. The other thing is, this seems to be a no bid contract of a company in Petaluma and there are struggling video businesses like Loud and Clear here in Catati that were not even called to, about this, to get a bid. It wasn't open bids and that doesn't seem right considering the pandemic. And this is just a sort of a something, because I keep forgetting to mention it, Catati TV twenty-eight has a delay and it, you can't understand what they're saying in the audio, anybody saying in the audio. It goes like thirty seconds and then there's a pause and then thirty seconds and pause, so you never can hear it. And I, I've stressed this before and it's never been fixed. So other than that, that's it on this item. Thank you.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
I would like it if you set up a new system that there's a way to see who else is in the audience. It's very alienating that we can't see anyone else's picture when they're talking, at least that, seems like a pretty simple thing. But it would be best if we could have an audience the way we used to have when we were in person. Thank you.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
I totally agree with what Adrian just said and she said what I was going to say. It is strange, unusual, and for someone who's people-oriented, this is a really challenging format and it would be great to be able to see who else is there, in addition to seeing all of you during the meeting instead of all of these words on a white screen. So whenever it happens, I will definitely be looking forward to it. I'm so glad you're thinking about that. Thank you.
Mayor Skilman, that'll do it for public comment. Okay, great, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council, see if there's any further comments. Or if no further comments, perhaps a question.
Mayor, Mayor Skilman, this is Councilmember Delosso. So if there are no further comments, I don't see the hands up.
I just saw Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Moore's hand up, so I don't know.
He does that, he does that to me on purpose, I think. Yes, please.
Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. No, thank you, Councilmember Delosso. I think it's a great idea and if I understand this correctly, it would give us the ability to have participants in the chamber as well as those that cannot attend physically to participate remotely.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much. No, I think it's a great idea and I think it would just allow for greater public participation and the community engagement. Thank you, Councilmember Delosso and Mayor Skilman.
All right, Councilmember Delosso, did you want to go ahead?
God, we do have a good time, though, don't we? Yes, I move that the city council of the city of Catati adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Coda Technology Group for the city council chamber web-based medium integration and video upgrade.
This is Councilmember Bandle.
There are two voices at once, but he wants to jump in for the second.
I believe, I believe the vice mayor was a shade ahead of.
Thank you, Councilmembers Lamond. I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
I guess I'll start it.
All right, we're getting a little crunchy after ten o'clock. So we have a motion in a second. Lauren, can you please take a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Delosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so five votes in favor. And with that, we will move on to item twelve, the city manager's reports. Back to you, Mr. Obit.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we're having a measure G Oversight Committee meeting this Thursday. Packet's out and it's at six P M. Agenda and Zoom credentials are on the city website as usual. So this is a preliminary, we haven't finished the audit yet, but this is a preliminary meeting to talk about traffic numbers and traffic report. We also, on the public work side of the house, we have some updates there. The twenty twenty street paving project is, this is the project that paves the six outer hub streets on the named streets and a portion of Alvarado plus Sierra. So work has been going on for the past two weeks with curb ramp replacements in some areas and I'm only getting ready for the road work. The work is going to become much more extensive and more disruptive next week with pulverizing and cement adding, raiding, compacting. So the roads, so that's one week and then the roads get paved the second week. So traffic control will be in place, closing the roads except for residents. Five-day written notice will go out and see everyone along the route. And in addition, message boards are up as well as signage removal of businesses. And like I said, the majority of the work will be in the next two weeks and then everything after that will be less disruptive, such as, right? But next week would be the, next week would be a lot of disruptive work followed by paving, which is also disruptive stuff. It'll be fairly quick though, hopefully, and we'll get out of, get out of everyone's way as quickly as possible. West School Street pathway, the DG path surface began installation this week on the extension of the path in West School Street down Richardson Lane. So retaining walls drainage in the pathway base have been completed and work's expected to be extended. And then just on paving finally, P G and E is, they've completed their work at the gas regulator in Plaza Park and they're set to permanently repair the trench in Old Road Highway. And the paving, the restoration paving following that is in, is going to include the entire right-hand lane with the mill and overlay to match the existing pavement. So on community development, Hessen Ranch subdivision, sales and construction are progressing steadily. The city has issued building permits for fifteen of the homes. So fifteen of the forty-seven, I believe, was the total there. So it's moving right along. Talking to them, they have lots of interest and demand's strong, so it's good. Rina, we've been kind of, we haven't talked about that recently, but A Bag is continuing to work on the next Rina allocation, regional housing needs allocation. So the Housing Methodology Committee is nearing the completion of the Rina allocation formula. They're going to be assigning all four hundred and forty thousand units across the Bay Area. So right now, Catati expects to receive Rina allocation. This is for the next eight-year cycle, between two hundred and seventy to three hundred and fifty units and the cycle is, the eight-year cycle is twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty. So as, just to put it in perspective, in the current eight-year cycle that we're in right now, we have a hundred and seventy-three units, so it's going to be roughly doubling the number of units next Rina cycle, which is consistent with what we're seeing in Los Angeles and across all the urban areas in the state. And the numbers, the specific numbers will be assigned in October. And this is the, this also is the first step for us in updating our housing, which will follow the Rina allocation. our housing, which will follow the RENA allocation. And then, lastly, on recreation, the farmer's market season continues to take place each Wednesday afternoon in Plaza Park at 4:30 to 7:30, this goes to begin September, as you recall, as it ended a month, so each week, there's multiple fresh fruit and vegetable vendors, hot food options, and made different more. The Recreation Department is also currently planning this year's Halloween celebration, and although we won't be hosting our regular city Halloween event for obvious reasons, we will still plan on multiple events that are safe to celebrate for the community. Some of the events that are in the planning include two drive-in movies in October, that, now that the council approved that, also online costume contests, downtown, outdoor, trick-or-treating, and even a trick-or-treat road show, Halloween parade through the neighborhoods, delivering candy to pre-registered families, so look for more on all this over the next couple of weeks. Thanksgiving break camp registration is also open now, you can sign up online for camp during these, camp is run for the three days off before the Thanksgiving Day holiday, and we're, of course, following the same health guidelines as we did during the summer, and expect full, full, three days of fun for kids that are off school, but their families are still working. And if anybody needs any information on these programs or anything else, you can contact Recreation, you can contact Ashley at 707-665-4222, raywilson@catatity.org, or always just go to our website, or the city's Facebook and Instagram. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for the City Manager from the council? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands flying up, so, thank you very much, Damian, for the presentation of your report, and on to item 13, City Council Member Reports, to get the ball rolling, I will state that I have nothing to report out of this meeting, and I will ask Councilmember Harvey, if he has anything to report out.
I'll be quick, attended on the 16th, Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and the most important thing out of that is, a site opened up in the airport area that may be a possibility for a north county hazardous waste facility, and that's been something that the county has needed for quite some time, because if you look at the maps of household hazardous waste, the farther you get away from central landfill, the least amount it's used, so we've actually needed that for quite some time, so we'll see how, how and if this site pans out, but it just happened to open up, and so we're pursuing looking at the possibility of doing that, so more to come, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Landman, do you have anything this week?
Nothing to report this week, Mayor Skilman, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Delosso, anything this week?
Nothing to report out, thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, Vice Mayor Moore, anything to report out?
Nothing to report out previous, but I do have a remit meeting coming up on Thursday, and that's it right now, thank you.
Okay, terrific, thank you, guys, with that, we'll turn to item 14, Public Comments on Non-Auction Agenda Items, and with that, I'll ask Lauren to check the attendees, if they have any comments on non-action agenda items. Thank you, Mayor Skilman, Lauren Alderman, go ahead.
This is regarding the City Manager's Report, Measure G Oversight, there's a oversight committee, once again, you guys are all playing games, why, your public input, this is why we don't have, for the last two years, there's been nobody in the meeting, it was not, the agenda was not put out on the city's meeting list, where you get the ones for the City Council and Planning Commission, it is not up the headlines, it is not a coming event, I only found out about it tonight when I walked on the meeting, these games need to stop about Measure G, and we have a right to public hearing, and to have, to have public input, and to have adequate notice, we're of 72 hours of meeting, which nobody knew, unless, we're not going to sit there and look at the calendar and see each day whether you're going to put something on, your prior actions, such as these, have led to, I don't know the last time somebody's actually been able to, and, other than the citizens that are appointed by the council at these meetings, I know I was like three or four years ago, so these games need to stop with this, this, I'm pretty sure it's from the City Manager, because he controls it on these public meetings, and if you want to say you're transparent, which you're obviously not, and you can't play this stuff, thank you.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
It was, it was challenging for me to hear what Ms. Alderman said, but I, but I think I got the, the general idea, and there, there is, there is a point that was made there in terms of not just transparency, but informing our community about meetings, council meetings, not everybody is on social media, and I'm not sure what other avenues there are, but that's a point to think about and to consider. Having said that, one of the things that I most appreciate about the City Council meetings is that there are more than two opportunities for the public to make comments, and those opportunities come during the meeting, after presentations, and after the council has had a chance to make input, we get to make input too, and that's not advertised, and I think it's great, and tonight, I took advantage of that, and I'm really glad I had the opportunity to do that, so, thank you.
Mayor Skilman, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments, and with that, we'll move on to item 15, I'll just check if Lauren, was there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Okay, great, well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:18 PM, everybody please stay safe and be careful out there, and I look forward to seeing you in another two weeks.